It says, "Admit all." Did they come in?
It looks like it, like, yes. We're also recording.
All right, so we're good to go? So everybody's in? Elijah? Yeah, I see nineteen people, all right. So I'll, um, I'll open the Planning Board meeting for October fourteenth, 2020, seeing that we have quorum. And I'm going to read the Governor Baker's March twelfth, 2020, order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law, Chapter General, uh, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen. And the governor's match fif- fifteen, twenty twenty, order imposing strict limitation of the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and with forty, and within forty-eight hours, we will post the length of the recording on the town's website and/or the town's social media page. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Patrick Driscoll, the chair, myself, Raymond DeJemian, the vice chair, Gene Guarino, the clerk, Michael McDonald, and Stephen Geller. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Mr. Elijah Romulus, the Assistant Town Planner, and Mrs. Leslie Dorr, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing that allows for public comment, we ask that you use one of the chat features to ask your question by listing the name and address of your question, by listing your name and address and your question. The chair will recognize that all questions in order. You can use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking your question. If you're on the phone, you may dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, so if the board is okay with it, we were asked to take a couple of small items out of order. We have, we have two formas and a request for broad acceptance and a bond release. Are there any objections from the board to take those out of order? We do post the agenda that we may take things out of order, so is there any objection to take those out of order?
No.
Yes, so no objections. Mr. Romulus, could we address two thirty-two Beach Street by Quail Hollow LLC? This is a form A, an A and R plan, a request to create map one thirty-one lot one A from four parcels, map one thirty-one A lots one, two, three, and four. And if the project representatives are available, we can let them in and have them explain what they're trying to do.
Uh, yes, so this A and R was submitted to revise a two lots, lot one A and lot two A. And then also to clear up some formerly divided lots through an A and R process. The proposal that they've sent does meet all of the zoning requirements.
So, excuse me, Mr. Romulus, just did we make, I'm looking at the application and Michael Cosco is the engineer and Quail Hollow LLC is the applicant? Are they, are they on the Zoom call by any chance?
Um, I believe I saw the phone number for Michael Cosco. He did say that he'd be calling in.
Is he available? Do we want, I'm fine if you want to explain it, but if he wants to represent his work, do we want to acknowledge him?
Uh, yes. Mr. Cosco, if you are in the audience.
Eight-six-zero number?
It looks like it's, uh, the eight-nine-three-zero. I see that your hands raised. If you want to go ahead and, um, and speak.
Do we have to unmute him?
Um, he's not muted right now.
I don't see him.
Okay. Mr. Cosco? I see there's a five-zero-eight, uh, nine-five-eight, eight-nine-three-zero number.
Right.
I guess if not, then, um, he's having some technical difficulties. I did perform the zoning analysis as it relates to the square footage and the frontage, and they do meet the standards for an A and R. So the town engineer also reviewed it, and he has no issue with the project as well.
So Elijah, there are two plans in our packet. There's one, one is existing and one is proposed. Is that what, what it is?
Uh, so there, yes, one was existing, uh, and then one's proposed. There was an issue, um, in the application as it was sent out for the, um, for this round of the A and R process. There wasn't a lot line that was clearly established, so they went ahead and revised that, and now it meets the the zoning requirements.
So basically, all that's happening is that, if I look from the original to the proposed, what's happening is that lot with the wetlands on it is the one being created?
That's correct.
Is that, like, on the plan we have, it's not labeled anything, but in the plan you have, it looks like it is labeled. Could you blow that up?
Yes.
So. What are they calling that?
They're calling this one lot two A.
And what about the lot, that has no frontage, correct?
It does. Uh, so this plant, this line here was originally a solid line.
Oh, okay, all right.
And that's what created the confusion. They went ahead and revised it and submitted as you see right now.
All right, because in the, in the latest packet, we still have the solid, we still have the one with the solid line, all right? But, but that line never existed, solid or dashed, and now it's just a, a, that, uh, that line ever exists before?
Uh, well, yeah, it was the former lot line, and it's being eliminated to create, to get the frontage.
Okay, all right, I see what you're saying, all right. But everything else is basically staying the same, correct?
Uh, so if you look to the left, these three lots here were at one point, you know, in the previous A and R, they were lots, but now they're being dissolved, so that is another change in the A and R plan.
So those dotted lines are coming, so those, those formas are coming?
Yes.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Um, it would be nice if Mr. Cosco were here. Could somebody just recap again? What exactly is being changed? If I take it, the dotted lines are being eliminated and everything else stays the same?
Uh, yes, lot one is being, uh, so lot one A and lot two A are the primary focus of this A and R plan. Lot two A does take, uh, a part of lot one A to get the frontage on Beach Street.
And the other part?
Um, it still remains part of the lot two A.
No, I'm talking about over on the other side of them.
So, yeah, these lots will, um, no longer, uh, be lots, so they'll dissolve into, you know, one single lot.
One remains the same, correct?
Yes.
And they're both buildable lots?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board questions?
And that makes three lots? Now, one, one A and two A?
So it does make two lots, the one A and two A, and then these do become a third separate lot.
Right in the middle, next to the shed or whatever that is, there's a small rectangular lot. What is that?
Uh, it looks like it's, um, measurements to the lot line of two.
All right, that's what I just, from, all right, just looked like a little, okay. All right. Any other board questions? If not, do we have a motion to endorse?
Uh, yeah, I'll make the motion to endorse the A and R.
Hi, Michael, give me a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
By Jane, any discussion on that?
I got one, I got one question. If I go back into the meeting notes, the notes over here, you know, under, under number three, it's saying this plan does not meet zoning requirements for residents A, B, lot two A could be labeled as a not, as a should be labeled a buildable lot. Is it able to build a lot?
I believe that was revised. That's why that, that dotted line there is, uh, is now a dotted line instead of a solid line, as it wasn't the original one that was submitted to us.
That's correct. Okay.
Could I just make a suggestion here? If this looks pretty clear and pretty straightforward, I would feel more comfortable if we just put this back on the agenda and see if Mr. Cosco could get on and maybe just clarify, make sure we are clear on everything before we approve it.
Okay, we could, we could just table it and come back to it.
Yeah, I think that would be the best thing.
Is Mr. Cosco on at this point?
Uh, so he, I do see him, uh, in the meeting. His, he did raise his hand on the phone. But it's, uh, I don't know if he's having some, you know, audio or issues on his end.
Can he type, can he type in the chat box?
Uh, he's, he's calling from a phone.
All right, we, we could take, if, if, um, if, if, um, Michael, if, if Gene will we, we'll pull back our second, and Michael will pull back his motion, we could table this later in the meeting, when maybe, uh, Mr. Cosco can join us.
Certainly. I'll pull back my second.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me, yeah.
All right, so we'll just table this, uh, later on the meeting, okay? So next, next, we thought these things were going to be short, that's why we took them, I took them out of, it wasn't very easy, so. We have eighty-one Austin Street. This is an application by, uh, Mr. Peter Profetti to Form A, A and R, request to split map ten lot eighty-three into two parcels, map ten lots eighty-three A and parcel B. I think the application was submitted, um, on behalf of Mr. Profetti by Silver Engineering Associates, so I don't know if we can see anybody from Silver, if they want to join us.
Uh, I, I do see both Rebecca and Larry from Silva Engineering.
Rebecca, my mic, but, okay. My, my mic was muted, sorry. Um, the A and R Plan of Land is to, as the intent up there, divide lot eighty-three to create eighty-three A and parcel B. Parcel B is not a buildable lot, and the end result would be to combine with, uh, let's see, what's that mapping lot? Uh, lot, map ten lot eighty-two right in front. So it's going to be combined with seventy-one Austin.
Mr. Romulus, can you just blow that up so we can see the frontage?
Yeah. Let's see what you got. Yeah, there you go. That's great.
So these do meet the, uh, the area and frontage requirements, and they do label the, uh, smaller lot not a buildable lot, so from a zoning standpoint, we're okay with that.
Okay, it is labeled not a buildable lot, I can see on parcel B. Okay, any board questions for the applicant or the town? This is no questions, we have a motion to endorse.
I'll make the motion to endorse.
A second.
So motion by Ray, second by Michael. Any discussion? Okay, so the roll call, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. DeJemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, next up, we have August Way. Um, this is an application by Mickelton Fogg Incorporated. Um, this is on Order O, FY twenty-one dash two thousand sixteen, laying out and accepting, accepting a private way as built review and bond release request. So in the packet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, so Costco Associates also is part of this, uh, application. I'm not sure if you guys would like to, if you, if the board is inclined to does the board want to look at this, or we want to wait to see if we can get Mr. Cosco on at a later point?
Yeah, let's wait for him.
All right, so. Okay, so, um, I'll open our first public hearing. We have, um, lot eighty-four Fruit Street, which is also known as Zero Pleasant Street, which is being proposed by Clamont Bridgewater LLC. This is a special permit and made to site plan proposals for an office warehouse building for distribution with a parking lot and, and associated parking. And lots, map lot eighty, map eighty-three, lot eighty-four. So, uh, Mr. Romulus, public hearing is open. We did receive some correspondence from Attorney Brennan in regards to the, the street. Um, and we did receive some correspondence from, uh, Butter, Melissa Ramandetta and a DOT letter, so, I don't know, how do you want to, excuse me, Mr. Romulus, should we read the correspondent? I imagine we'll invite Mr. Attorney Brennan in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is my audio okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at one seventy-four Dean Street in Taunton, and I represent the applicant, the Clamont Companies. Uh, I believe this might be our third public hearing on this. We all got kind of blown away last week. Five-minute microburst went through town, uh, so we got kicked over to tonight. But I think, uh, most of the issues that had been raised by the board and by the Butters, uh, I believe have been answered through the, through the MEPA process and the certificate that issued in, uh, October of twenty eighteen. So I would certainly refer, refer the board to that. Uh, you have received communication from the town engineer with his comments on, and, uh, generally, uh, an approval. Mr. Silver has, uh, rebutted or responded to the issues raised by Azu in his comment letter. Uh, I believe your, your planners have done a zoning analysis and find the, the plan and the uses to be in order. Uh, so what's before the board is the application for a special permit and a site plan approval. Uh, we're happy to respond to, to any other questions that the board might have tonight. We have a, a traffic engineer available and myself and Mr. Silver, who is the civil engineer on the project. Uh, so I think we're all quite familiar with it. If the board members have specific questions, I'd be happy to uh, turn those over to the appropriate person to answer them.
I'll, I'll open it up to board members for questions for either attorney.
I have a number of questions, but I think the letters that have been sent to the board should be written to the record first.
Um, so the, the letter is from, uh, Attorney Brennan and, uh, Mrs. Ramandetta?
I believe there were two letters from Butters, and I did not see the letter from Attorney Brennan, though. I didn't see.
Okay, so why don't we, um, and just so I'm clear, Mr. DeJemian, the two letters that came in today?
I believe one came in today and one a couple days ago, if I remember correctly. One, uh, the one today was from, uh,
Melissa Ramandetta?
Ramandetta, I believe, uh, Mrs. Hanson sent a letter also a few days ago.
You know, I, I thought, I thought she did, but I couldn't find that. Did, did you find that one, Mr. Romulus?
Yes.
You do have that one?
Yes.
Uh, all right, so, all right, so why don't, why don't we, why don't we start off, um, with the two letters from Mrs. Hanson and from, um, Melissa Ramandetta? And then Mr. Attorney Brennan also submitted a letter in regards to the road, and he can either go through that himself, or we could read that in, whatever he prefers. Um, so would somebody, Gene or Ray, or somebody, please read the, uh, Mrs. Hanson one, and then we can read Mrs. Ramandetta one after that?
Okay, I can start with Mrs. Hanson. Um, although hopefully I can start with Mrs. Hanson's. You'll have to roll it up, um, Elijah, eventually.
Yes.
To the Town of Bridgewater Planning Board, Patrick Driscoll, Chair, Raymond DeJemian, Gene Guarino, Michael McDonald, and Stephen Geller. I am writing once again to express my concerns with the Clamont Bridgewater LLC proposed office slash warehouse building, the distribution with a parking lot and associated parking, map eighty-three lot eighty-four on Fruit Street in Bridgewater. Reviewing their proposed plans, I question why they need to make the plan so large that it requires a special permit and variances, et cetera, in order for it to be allowed? Why can't they design the building and parking area to actually fit? Fit there without seeing variances? There is no need to push the limits, no need to cross into buffer zone. If they reduce the size, stayed within more reasonable boundaries without potential effects on the wetlands, they may meet less resistance from those that are opposing their plans. Want to scroll it up, Elijah? This is not an expansion of a building, of, of a business or building that needs a waiver. This is a new plan that should conform to zoning regulations. There is no hardship involved. I understand that the Conservation Commission will be meeting the day after your meeting to discuss their findings on their walk of the area. Not knowing if the Planning Board will be making any decision on October seventh and what those will be, I respectfully request that nothing be decided until you at least hear their report. I do hope the Planning Board sees the light and make their recommendation to reduce the size of their proposed design. But if you will be making a decision based on the effects of the buffer zone, et cetera, I would hope you would wait until you have all the information before you do. I do feel it is sad that there will be nothing left of this once beautiful undisturbed land and feel strongly that what is left be protected to the fullest extent. Bigger is not always better. Let's try to compromise and make it smaller. Reduce the amount of clear cutting and replace the same type of trees and other vegetation that they cut down. And it is important to not use pesticides on the lot. Reduce lighting to keep the night light just that night. Is there any more than that? Thank you for listening, and I do hope that the design can be reduced to avoid any potential detrimental effects on the wetlands and nature. I also would like to know what type of businesses they are expecting to be in the buildings. They must have some idea, other than, otherwise, they would be risking a lot by building something that no one wants to rent. Can that be disclosed, please? Thank you sincerely, Janet Hanson.
So we received one from, uh, Melissa Ramandetta of three seventeen Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater, Mass. Um, and she attached the DOT document. I, I don't think we need to read the DOT document, but just maybe her letter, that's okay.
Uh, I just brought it up.
Does somebody else want to volunteer, or do we want to have Gene do it again?
Uh, I'll do it. And I, I'll have a comment afterward. The letter is addressed to the Town Bridgewater Planning Board, Patrick Driscoll, Chair. Dear Chairman, Chairman Driscoll, and members of the Planning Board, I would like to follow up my letter dated September second, two thousand twenty, with regard to the proposed development on Fruit Street, map eighty-three lot eighty-four, an Austin Warehouse Building with parking and associate grading within the buffers, buffer zone to a vegetated wetland. I've attached a letter dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, from Jonathan Gilbert, Administrator DOT, to Ned Carey of Clamont Properties detailing Section sixty-one, finding for the Lakeshore Property EEA number four-nine-five-nine. Particularly note are the following findings as noted in Section Three. Overall project, overall project traffic impacts that in absence of mitigating highway improvements, pro- crop, project-related traffic will have a greatly detrimental operational safety impact in a number of areas, including the intersections within the areas, including Lakeside Drive, Lakeshore Center Drive, Route twenty-four South, and northbound, and northbound, and Elm Street. The findings also state that for the following intersections, jurisdiction resides with the town of Bridgewater, Lakeside Drive, Lakeshore Center Drive, Elm Street. Residents of Lakeside Drive and its surrounding neighborhoods, as well as Lakeshore residents, have brought forth to the Planning Board considerable concern, concerns relating to traffic and safety issues. We solely applicable for the additional three thousand two hundred trips per day due to development of Lakeshore Center and proposed development of the Flex Warehouse Office structure. The applicant should be held responsible for improving what is due by the DOT as, quote, generally detrimental operation safety impact, unquote, to traffic in the area to Lakeshore Center development. During the last Planning Board hearing, and the company, the company hired by the applicant presented the data, the traffic data indicated that residents of Lakeshore Drive, Lakeside Drive, the neighborhood with seventy households, took only thirty left trips, turn, excuse me, thirty-eight left turns per day on Route one oh four. This number does not appeal act, appear accurate and/or representative of current traffic patterns. A new study with the purpose of improving traffic and safety conditions in the area should be commissioned by the applicant during the fall, uh, winter, or spring, while schools in session include the impacts of Lake Shore Center and the Flex Warehouse slash Office structure. The addition of a turning lane on Route one oh four would be hazardous for residents of The addition of a turning lane on Route one oh four would be hazardous for residents of Lakeside Drive, left turn onto one oh four. Only further confusing negotiation of a left turn from Lakeside Drive onto busy Route one oh four. The present residents taking a left turn from Lakeside Drive must be vigilant in watching for cars from both directions, but especially traffic coming from Bridgewater on Route one oh four simultaneously along with cars exiting the Route twenty-four southbound off at nearly fifty miles an hour. The applicant has requested special permits and waivers to work around zoning requirements such as paragraph nine point six five five and nine point six six four. The applicant has proposed a project that fully builds out all the upland area and includes part of the warehouse parking spaces, loading docks, and drainage, all within the hundred-foot zone to wetland. A smaller building in, in parking area in my front of parking area that does not impact hundred-foot wetland buffer zone would be more appropriate for the site. A responsible tree-cutting plan that tries to preserve as much of the pristine forest as needed. The site abuts twenty-four, Route twenty-four, and as proposed, this substantial tree-cutting plan will result in significant increase in noise from the highway. Also, the warehouse building will be visible from Route one oh four in the surrounding area during the fall when, when winter months when leaves fall. The project falls within an area of critical environmental concern and borders the wetlands connected to Lake Nipponak in Hockelaw Swamp, and as such, requires a heightened awareness of overall impacts and tension to limits. The planning board has the opportunity to work with the applicant to ensure that the project represents responsible development in accordance with town zoning requirements without adverse impact on surrounding neighborhoods and on the town's natural resources. Please request that the applicant revise the design of the project outside of the wetland hundred-foot buffer zone. Provide a responsible tree-cutting plan preserves as much of the forest as possible. Perform a current date traffic study during fall, winter, or spring as represented the impacts from phases one through three of Lakeshore Center and the impacts of neighborhoods surrounding it. Apply conditions to any approval that would ensure that the applicant is self-accountable to mitigate detrimental traffic and safety impacts in the area. As recently shown within Broad Street Development, the Town of Bridgewater should expect the applicant to, quote, give back to the town in some way as the project will require special permits and waivers in order to proceed. The Lakeshore Center project is much larger than Broad Street and commercial developments should be held to the same standards. The cleaning of Route one oh four COVID is beneficial to the areas surrounding Lakeshore Center and should be added as a condition. The offer of the trees or other parts of Bridgewater only offsets substantial tree-cutting to be done under the current plan. Thank for the opportunity to provide comments, great consideration, sincerely, Melissa Roman Dada.
So that was all, that was all received for public comment, correct, Mr. Romels?
We did receive one from Pat Neary. She'd like to have it read.
Was that, when was that received?
I don't know. I saw it in chat.
Okay, just, just, could I ask? Just to clarify something, I I just want to make sure I understand it and everybody else understands it. Mr. Romels?
Yes.
So I think there may have been some confusion early on with the zoning analysis. And maybe that's where it's coming from or not coming from, but there are no, there are no variances being, we can't approve a project that doesn't comply with zoning. So there are no variances being requested on this project, correct?
Correct.
And the, the buffer zone requirements that fall under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission are also being met in that the hundred-foot is only a jurisdictional line that requires filing. It can actually be it can actually be up to twenty-five feet, correct?
Yes, and to your point, Mr. Chairman, the applicant did go before the Conservation Commission. And last week, they agreed on it with pre-standard order of conditions.
Alright, so my, so my next, my next question is, is I think, I think some of the confusion around the waivers and whatnot of that. In the initial zoning analysis that we got, it stated that the building was over the point five gross floor area rate ratio, and in fact, it's much smaller than than that, correct?
That's correct.
And, and although we allow three, we allow three stories of thirty-five feet within a hundred of Route one oh four, and four stories of fifty-five feet beyond that, we had in the zoning analysis greater than thirty-five feet, but that doesn't, so, so there's no violation of building footprint. And I think there may have been some confusion around that, that they'd be seeking variances, but there are no variances being sought for this, correct?
That's correct. No variances are being sought.
And the waiver that is being sought, just so I'm clear, and is, is that the connectivity of the buildings and, and that would actually impact the wetlands if we ask them to connect the buildings through a a pedestrian walkway, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I just with the letters saying variances and stuff, that the building is much, it is small than, than could actually be allowed there. And I think that it may have been misrepresented in our own analysis of the project, and that, that's where some of the confusion might be coming from, so. Okay, so. So any other board questions or comments on the, on the letter?
Mr. Pat, I do have some comments on. On the Ramadella letter, but do you want to read in Pat Neary's letter first or what?
Sure, did we find that?
I have it.
Would you mind reading it, Jean?
Okay, it's was sent by email on October fourth to the planning board regarding the Fruit Street Flex Building Proposal. Dear Planning Board members, please accept and consider my comments on the above proposal. The Flex Building presents many concerns because of its location within the area of critical critical environmental concern and being in a Zone Two water aquifer. There are, however, many additional concerns. This proponent is asking you to allow waivers and reductions in setbacks simply because they want to build a larger building than allowed in our zoning regulations. None of the waivers they are seeking are because of a hardship on their part. Placing a dumpster and a loading dock that infringes upon the setbacks is not a hardship. Neither is reducing the front yard setback. It is simply because they want to build out every possible, every foot possible in order to obtain more rent. At a previous public hearing, the traffic engineer stated that he couldn't do a traffic study. He didn't explain why. In recent years, new traffic sources are the Arbella Clermont Commercial Building, the Viva Apartments, the Access Apartments, and the Marriott Hotel. A new traffic study must be done. Traffic engineers can project the numbers, even though the Viva units are not occupied yet. The PDD zoning specifically states that any development should be without adverse impacts on the neighborhoods. We need to know the traffic impacts and remediation if necessary. And currently, traffic is reduced because of COVID nineteen. As so many people are working from home and others just staying home. Adjustments can be projected for when lives return to normal. As I look at the plan, there is no buffer between the one oh three K building on Route twenty-four. Noise will be a huge factor to the surrounding neighborhood. Again, I want to remind you that the PDD zoning specifically states that any development should be without adverse impacts on neighborhoods. And there is now a category in real estate listings that state a noise level. Just like there is a category that shows the solar factor. When that area is clear-cut for building and parking, the noise from the highway will increase tremendously. Please stipulate and require a buffer alongside Route twenty-four. Any type of replacement vegetation that is required should be northeast native plants, shrubs, and trees. Since we do not know the type of tenant that this building will attract, perhaps a S P should be required for each tenant in order to protect the A C E C aquifer area. And since you, we, don't know who the tenants will be, parking spaces should be at the maximum number required. I know that you know we are in a serious climate crisis that is causing destruction everywhere. California has banned the sale of gas, only vehicles within a few years. We have to take steps to remedy this crisis too. It can't just be business as usual. The building plans indicate that this one hundred and three thousand square foot building will be solar-ready. There should be requirement to install solar with a deadline for installation. We have the technology and you have the power. This building represents over two acres of available roof space. We have missed several opportunities for this on Elm Street. The enormous facility there, unknown tenant, and the twelve thousand square foot addition on Theory Wellness. Elsewhere, the Access Apartments, the Clermont Arbella Building, the three hundred Viva units, and our new school building. And all the lighting should follow the dark sky recommendations. There are currently bills in the Senate and the House of Representatives which will preserve habitat for a variety of animals, including bats, birds, fish, and insects which rely on day-night variations for survival. This is particularly important in this sensitive environmental area. I'm attaching a copy of the proposed lighting regulation that was suggested in our zoning recodification. This would have another positive environmental step for our town and should be implemented. I hear great horned owls hooting at night. This impact is devastating to them and to me. I am not against progress, but it is of primary importance to protect our neighborhoods and our planet. Please consider these suggestions. Thank you, Pat Neary.
Oh, just, I'm going through the packet from the last meeting, Mr. Romels. We received that, when was our first meeting on this project?
August.
I think it was August nineteenth, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I just want, I just want to make sure we're being fair, and we did receive a letter from Brendan McGovern on August fourteenth. Was that already read into the record?
Chairman, I'm not sure based on an August letter.
It was in this packet, so. I don't know. You should read it just to be consistent. I have it in front of me. Do you want me to read it? Just to make sure. I'd rather read it twice than miss, than miss the letter, that's all. So it's addressed to the Town of Bridgewater on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, to whom it may concern. I'm ready to urge your support of the Clermont Company's proposal to build a hundred three thousand square foot Flex Building near the current business center. It is my understanding that facility is being developed for high-tech and life science companies. Not only would the project further, further devastate our local economy, but I believe that it's especially good business investment in light of these uncertain times. For instance, many cities and towns facing huge budget shortfalls are facing huge budget shortfalls as economic development has come, come to a halt. And tax revenue at all levels of government have become less, much less predictable. As a result, I am sure our community will benefit from this project in many ways. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Written by Brendan McGovern, thirty Vera Drive, Bridgewater, Mass, zero two three two four. Good, so I think that covers the, the correspondence. So would anybody like to ask questions to the applicant from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Driscoll, I'd like to go back to the letter from a little confused, from the Ramadella letter. My first question is to the board itself. She included in her letter the MassDOT findings on the location. And I may be losing my mind. I know I'm losing my memory in some ways, but did we ever see this before? This is the first time I've, I've seen it based on my memory. Am I wrong or was this ever submitted to us?
I'm not sure if it was submitted to engineering and Mr. Antonero reviewed it or not.
But the board hasn't gotten it, has it?
No, I think this was the first time.
Yes, it is the first time it was presented that.
Well, it's, I don't, I don't know, but it seems to me that we should have seen this. Because we talked about traffic before. And in, in Mrs. Ramadella's letter, she quotes from the findings where she's already said in the absence of mitigating highway improvements, project-related traffic would be expected to have generally detrimental operational safety impacts in number of primary areas. Then they list five different areas. And my, my point here is that in three of the areas, they say this, this intersection is not under Mass DOT jurisdiction. If necessary, the detriment, the detrimental nation of appropriate mitigation, mitigation measures at this intersection should be made between proponent and the Town of Bridgewater. We haven't talked about that, have we?
We have not.
It seems to me we're, I don't know. Traffic issue may be more of an issue than we realize, and maybe we're not facing it. And maybe we should be talking about how to mitigate some of the potential impacts since the Mass DOT seems to think that we will have some.
I guess, so Mr. Romels, do we know if Mr. Antonero or Mr. Ladoo reviewed this and making their recommendations to the board? And maybe we could ask the traffic engineer that represents the project to explain this.
So the, the traffic study as it relates to this project was reviewed by the town engineer and highway superintendent. They both did not come back with any contrary comments for this specific project. You know, the Clermont project does have several different parts of its campus, but for this specific project, they did not have any objections.
Maybe for further clarification, if the applicant would have the traffic engineer explain it, that might be helpful.
Mr. McNorton is here tonight and he can address that particular letter. I will point out that the town was on the distribution list for that letter. It's the Department of Community and Economic Development. The Town of Bridgewater was CC'd with that letter. So I think it, it did end up somewhere in town. But keep in mind, the comments were for the entire project, which encompasses phases one, two, three, and four. And the MIPA certificate, which determined that the traffic would not be a detriment in the first three phases. And I think this Mass DOT letter contemplated a build-out of the entire project, which would be all the lots therein, including the vacant lots on Lakeshore Drive. But with that said, I'll, I'll turn it over to Gary McNorton from McMahon and Associates, who is here tonight and has seen that letter and his office actually conducted the traffic study. I believe it was back in twenty seventeen.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, so that was based on prior filings for the overall project. That, that is the section sixty-one finding letter from Mass DOT, which is kind of the final step in the MIPA approval process for any project that's going through an E I R. This project has gone through several iterations within the MIPA world, and that's the latest filing in the documentation for Mass DOT. The language that they use, the detrimental language is standard. That is in every section sixty-one finding letter. Unless there, you know, it's a, a project that really doesn't generate much traffic. And they'll, then they won't use that language, but virtually any project that generates traffic and has some level of mitigation, they use that exact same terminology in the beginning of the letter. So that's just to keep, put it in some sort of context. And, and they're really the key phrase, and there is in the absence of mitigating highway improvements. And within that letter, they cite, you know, the locations that are under their jurisdiction, the ramps, that there are signal timing adjustments. They're actually tied to the apartments that are under construction now. That timing will be implemented. Uh, that timing will be implemented. Before those, um, apartments are occupied. And that's been, you know, is about to be final, finally permitted through Mass DOT. You know, the, the overall filing and that, that project letter, the section sixty one refers to thirty two hundred daily trips. That does include the apartments, the office building, as well as this, this specific building. So it does include a lot of those projects that were previously approved. And those projects had a much greater discussion about traffic because they were generating. The bulk of that, uh, probably about ninety percent of the daily trips were coming from. Those specific, uh, from the apartments and the office building. This use was a much lower overall trip generation number. Which is why it hasn't warranted a separate traffic study. We did look at how much traffic it would generate. Uh, we did do an extensive study based on counts back in twenty seventeen. Those counts were projected forward. Out to twenty twenty four. And again, that was submitted to the town. It was peer reviewed. It was submitted to the state as part of the MIPA process. And has gone through, um, that approval process as well. A couple of things to clarify, I believe previously, I, I don't know if I misstated or if it was just misunderstood when I talked about the thirty eight left turns. From Lakeside Drive. That is in the peak one hour. So that is in the morning, single hour. That we counted those thirty eight cars turning left not. Over the entire day. Um, and with regards to being able to conduct, you know, new traffic counts. You know, that's where we're, we're a little bit handcuffed right now. And I think one of the, um, the comments even noted that, you know, traffic is reduced because of COVID nineteen. So with, um, Mastod, you know, we work with Mastod regularly. Even their projects, we're not going out and doing new counts. If you can find counts that are within the past, you know, several years and they're going back at least five or six years. And accepting those counts. You would do a new study based off that. The study for this project was done based on twenty seventeen volumes that were projected forward to twenty twenty four. At the time when they were done. So we're still within that window. And the, and the findings and the, the prior analysis is all still. Appropriate and valid and the counts that we had done are really the best that we can get right now. I think this meeting is evident that people aren't driving as much. You, you're staying remote to do a lot of, um, things that we used to get in our cars to do so. And traffic volumes are lower. And that was the point that I was making is that the volumes are significantly lower, patterns are different. This is not, I think, what anybody would consider a normal condition for traffic counts. Uh, the counts we did do in. Twenty seventeen were done in early May. We made sure that they were done when not only the local schools, but, um, Bridgewater State University was in session. So. They do provide a, an accurate representation of traffic in the area. I hope I answered the question.
Can I continue, Mr. Driscoll? I'm just. Thank you, Mr. McGovern. I just would also just. Again, from their, from the Mass DOT. Assuming that what, what you say is correct, that they're, they're talking about the entire project and not just, uh, the warehouse. I, I. I gather that you probably are. They, the, the point that they're making though. That three of the intersections are not covered by the state and that they recommending. That the proponent and the town work out the mitigating circumstances. If it is one large project, why can't we do that now? What's the reason not doing it?
No, you're still getting, it's still within the, the planning board's purview to. During the approval of the apartments and the office building, there were mitigation measures that were implemented. And, you know, were discussed for the site drive. I think they're part of the construction that's ongoing, so they, they may not be implemented yet. To put in pedestrian accommodations and put in a second lane, uh, within the site driveway. It, at this intersection, I believe in the last meeting, we did talk about, uh, the possibility of a turn lane. And on, and I think we talked about other opportunities for mitigation at this location and it's not a location where a signal is appropriate. It doesn't meet, uh, the traffic volume warrants. And we did project out. The traffic from this specific use as well as all of the other uses, the apartments and everything else that were added on top of that in our prior study. This location doesn't meet warrants. So we had talked about a left turn lane into Fruit Street coming off of Pleasant Street. I believe there were some comments that, that weren't in support of that. So that was the one item that we had talked about as a possible mitigation measure. But, you know, when you get locations like this that aren't. An overly high volume to the point that they warrant signalization, uh, the majority of traffic coming out of Fruit Street is already a right turn. So. You know, separate lanes on Fruit Street don't really add any benefit. And the one thing that, you know, could possibly benefit is the left turn, but I know there's some differing opinions on. Whether or not that helps or does that just, um, result in cars moving through a little quicker?
My only point is, I, I understand what you're saying and I, I don't disagree. I just, I'm just saying that if there is the need. To do some changes because of the development, the, not just this one section, but the entire development. And it's up to. The developer and the town to work it out. Why aren't we doing that now? I guess that's what I'm saying to everybody. Why, what are we waiting for? If we, we're talking about increasing traffic from the flex building. Why not do it now? Why not make it part of this, uh, discussion right now?
Mr. Jamian, uh, if I may. So this, uh, special permit and site plan application is specific for this flex building. And, um. Just as a best practice and. Making sure that we are staying in line with the project at hand. Conditioning anything outside of, as conditioning anything outside of relating to the flex building. I, I don't believe is a, a good idea.
Why do we talk about traffic in the first place then?
Well, it was brought up by the, um. By the public.
So can I just say, ma- maybe we could address that in our conditions, Mr. Romulus, because it out. Stated in our last meeting, we did talk about the possibility of that left turn lane, you know, new stop sign at the end of, uh, Fruit Street, et cetera. It would be good just to get some clarification as to what the town wants. We could add that to the condition. You know, maybe we can, you know. Make, just make that, make the traffic or the intersection an additional condition as to what you proposed tonight.
Uh, yes, I can definitely do that.
Mr. Jamian, do you have more questions? Go ahead, if you do.
Well, let me just, uh. Give you, the, the, what, my thoughts on this. I was, uh, coming into this meeting, I was, uh. Basically ready to vote. And I'm not sure now I am. Uh, the one main thing that, um, is that there are a number of issues with, with, in my mind, which I'm not sure they. I can, uh, stand by all of them. I, I, I do think the building should be smaller. I do not like to see all the trees cut down. My main concern here is protection of the wetlands and the nip. And, um, my. Proposal is not proposal, that if we approve this, we're also approving a detention basin. Now, the town has, I don't know how many hundred detention basins. In it right now. Most on, uh, public. Developments. We, uh, assess developers coming in now five thousand dollars to keep those detention basins cleaned. And they're not. We don't do it. Now, this, this particular detention basin is on private property. And it's on the, on the edge of a wetlands, which means it's a critical detention basin. That needs to be maintained. And my feeling is. That for me even to consider approving this, that the developer has to have a maintenance plan in place. That gives the town the ability to make sure that it's maintained. And that if it's not maintained, the town has the right to rectify the situation. And that, that agreement, in my mind, should be. Approved by the town council. That's critical in my mind if this is going to be approved.
Oh, Mr. Romulus. You crafted a condition today with. A town engineer, a zoo engineer that would. That would potentially address that issue of the maintenance of the detention basin, correct? Is that something you want to discuss now, Mr. Jamian? And do you want to wait till we talk about potential conditions for their overall project?
Well, first, I, I'm not qualified to come up with the actual conditions. I've looked at some and there are a number of different possibilities. But I just think that, that obviously town engineer should, uh, approve what, how they've done. He knows better than I do. Um, but I also want town council to look at the legal ramifications of us enforcing that. Maintenance agreement.
So I, I think you did provide some correspondence to you today, Mr. Romulus, that we got in the form of an email?
Yes.
Do, do you want to read that, um, suggestion that Mr. Antonero and you, um, worked out and maybe that could help? Clarify Mr. Jimmian's, uh, question and maybe, uh. Somebody from Silva's office can, uh. Chime in in regards to the maintenance plan for that basin.
Yes, so what I can, um. So as it relates to the drainage basins. There are several conditions that were, um, taken. From section fifteen of the, uh, town bylaws. And, um, I'll just read them off as, um. As they, they stand. So. Uh, outflow of a stormwater drainage system will not degrade existing groundwater quality. Uh, for non-residential uses, recharge shall be by stormwater infiltration basins. Or similar systems covered with natural vegetation. Dry wells may be allowed as an alternative, alternative provided that the volume to be recharged is pre-treated. By means of open swales, detention areas. Or other similar filtration devices acceptable to the, uh, planning board. For all non-residential uses, all such basins and wells shall be preceded by oil, grease and sediment traps. To facilitate removal of contamination. And. Any and all recharge areas shall be permanently maintained in full working order by the owner of the lots. On which they are located. I, there are two also additional ones, uh, no chemical de-icing agents. To be used on any of the impermeable surfaces. Uh, no commercial fertilizers will be used in the drainage basins, uh, only organic fertilizers. To add to this, um, and to the point that, uh, Mr. Jamian brings up. We can add a proponent in terms of the maintenance to be perhaps reviewed on a yearly basis, uh, by the town. If that's, you know, acceptable.
So, so, so Mr. Romulus, the, those first, the, the last three pertain to maintenance, but the first four or five that you read from section fifteen are more. Design standards. So those, I don't think need to be considered. Those are already considered in the design that they have before us, so.
Yeah, Mr. Driscoll.
Sure.
I may, I do, yeah, I, I, I agree with what you just said. Um, what I was talking about. I have in front of me a, uh. Detention basin maintenance task and schedule from the state of Michigan. And it has, I'm not going to read everything, but it has, uh, close to fifteen different tasks, like inspection for sediment accumulation. Removal sediment accumulation, clean debris, replace stone, drip wrap, mowing, things like that. Then they show. When it should be done annually, every, every year, in the spring, July, whatever, as needed. That's what I'm talking about is in maintenance agreement. I'm talking about something that will require. The owner to go in, have a specific schedule and make sure that, that detention basin is functioning. And that the town has the right to inspect it. And that if it isn't maintained, the town has the right to go in and correct it. What in every way legally that it chooses. That's what I'm talking about. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
No, Mr. Mr. Silver or Mr. Brown?
I'm, I'm very familiar with the type of, uh, maintenance plan that Mr. Jimian is speaking about. A- as well as an easement to the municipality to go in and do the work if the property owner doesn't do it. Uh, that's a, that's a fairly common mechanism to make sure that the detention retention basins. Uh, are maintained so that they, they serve their function. And I, I don't disagree with that at all. Uh, I would point out that if you looked at the, the area of the Clermont site that's already been developed. There are, uh, I can't count them exactly, but there are probably. Six to eight detention areas on the existing site. And if you were to go over there, you would see that they are all well maintained and functioning, some of which have been around for. You know, the first, the site was purchased in, uh. Uh, twenty years ago. So, uh, they've been functioning probably for fifteen plus years. So, uh, I don't disagree with having a, a maintenance plan and an easement to the town to go in and do the work. If the property owner does not do it satisfactorily. And I've drafted those agreements before and we're very careful and town council would be very careful to make sure the town had the right. But not the obligation to go on the town and perform the maintenance work. So I, I don't see that as being an issue at all. It's, it's a common practice.
Mr. Silver?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Silver, you, you. Are you up?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as far as that, as to every design we do, it comes with an old, an operation and maintenance, uh, plan. So everything that, uh, Michigan does, Massachusetts has been already doing it. I would say that to Mr. Jamian. We've been doing that right along. And I will say to you, just as Ed has said, is that every other site that we've done. Yes, part of the Clermont, uh. Properties, uh, has involved, uh, detention basins which have been maintained, that have been maintained well. Most of those, in fact, all of them are far closer to the lake than this particular site. And every safeguard has been taken in this design to make sure that the lake is protected and the wetlands leading to the lake. There is nothing here being sacrificed at all in terms of the integrity of the wetlands. And all the criteria that you've outlined, that, uh, we, that's what we designed to. So I don't know if somebody's suggesting that it isn't meeting those requirements, but I'm telling you it does. So, uh. Rebecca's on here also. She can chime in as well, but. I, 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 I don't see that what you're asking here, what you're dwelling on in this operation and maintenance is anything other than what we, what we do anyway. And what we outlined in our documents.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is the Clermont's, it's a known entity. Uh, it, it's not someone coming in for the first time to do a project or a development in Bridgewater. They've been there for twenty years and I think, uh, I, I think everyone could agree that, that it's a very well maintained property. And they take care of the infrastructure. And there's no reason to think that would change. Uh, they're proud of their projects. If I may, um, I, I'm happy to hear what both of you say. Larry and Mr. Brennan, that, that, that's, that's good to hear. But I think you'll also agree. That a public entity has the responsibility of overseeing something that could cause problems to the environment. And so that's all I'm talking about. If this has been done in, as, as you say, Larry, in the past, that's great. But I think perhaps it was our responsibility, maybe we neglected it in the past, to make sure that the oversight of maintenance was done by the town. That's all I'm saying. But I, I'd like to think that, and I understand your point, and I'd like to think that. Even though in the past, the town hasn't been given the oversight opportunity. I think despite that, I think Clermont has undertaken the, the maintenance and. And we're happy to have the town look over our shoulder at a certain comfort level.
And I would like to point out also that actually the town has really moved away from taking responsibility for any of the. Basins anywhere in town. In fact, um, as, as you recall, years ago. The, the planning board and the town, uh, decided that they want to drainage lots. Uh, in order to make sure that, uh, these were separated out. Uh, and I, and. Uh, there's always a reliance on homeowners and subdivisions to be taking care of basins because actually the highway. Department doesn't have the manpower to be dealing with, uh, the number of detention basins and drainage, uh. Structures and so forth. Cause I think they, the last thing I saw is they got like a hundred and fifty miles of roadway in town to maintain. So, um, it's nice to have them involved and maybe just looking and making sure that others are doing what they should be doing. But they really don't have the, uh, manpower to do it themselves.
Larry, I said that in the beginning, the town isn't doing its job in terms of, uh, taking care of the detention basins and subdivisions. All I'm saying is we should be doing more and this particular development is a critical one. It's not like a four-lot subdivision next to my house, which has not been maintained at all over the last fourteen years. But this one is really important. That's why I'm saying the town should step up for this particular one and make sure it's done right. That's all. And I think we agree that, uh, Terry and Brennan seem to agree that it, it's not a big deal. It's just that we should have done it in the past, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think it's, it's fine condition because we've been doing what we're supposed to do and will continue to do so. So you, the town will have the opportunity, but not the burden.
Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy, any other questions?
Oh, boy. Questions, seven questions now, just, I don't know. Let somebody else speak, let me think.
Um, so maybe I, I read it, but just so we're clear on the, um, Attorney Brennan, you submitted some documentation in regards to the road and ownership of the road and who's responsible for that road?
I did, yes.
Would you like, would you like to explain your letter and, and?
The, the question was posed to me about, uh, you know, that section of Fruit Street, which on some old plans is also called Old Pleasant Street. Uh, if, if you look at it, it looks like a road in a war zone. I mean, it's in great disrepair. And the only entity using it right now is, uh, the Mass DOT. And they have a, a depot there that maintains their, uh, highway snow removal equipment and highway maintenance equipment, and they're using it all the time. Uh, but Fruit Street continues to be a public way. It, it has never been abandoned as a public way and it is access to my client's property. Uh, now that lot is on the tax rolls, my client's paying taxes on it and Fruit Street is the way he gets to that property. So the question was raised about what is the status of it? And there's no evidence anywhere that it was ever discontinued. Uh, when Route twenty-four went in or there were changes to the on-off ramps on twenty-four and the one oh four intersection, uh, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts actually took an easement, uh, from the then-owner of the proper property, who his name was Sender Ramani. And the, the state took the easement and gave it to the town of Bridgewater and the Beagle Club so that their access would not be cut off. Uh, and, and it was because of the reconfigurations relating to Route twenty-four and one oh four. So they, they can't landlock a property owner. So what they do is they take an easement across someone else's property and they give it to the owners who would otherwise have been landlocked. And they allow that, that right-of-way to be used essentially for roadway purposes. So it's just as if they had frontage on a public way. So in this case, the Fruit Street is a public way. It comes down and it ties into the forty-foot right-of-way that the state took from Mr. Ramani in nineteen seventy-nine and gave it to, uh, the Beagle Club and the town of Bridgewater. Coincidentally, two years later, uh, the Commonwealth came in and took the whole site from Ramani. And that's what we now have is the Mass DOT site. It's a ten-acre parcel that they took from Mr. Ramani in nineteen eighty-one. So the right-of-way came first in seventy-nine and the taking for the DOT site came in, in eighty-one. So it's a public way. My client has full access to it. The right-of-way he was given may be used for, for, uh, highway or road purposes. So what we're showing on the plan is, uh, entirely appropriate to access this property. And I, I think that was the question. Uh, as part of the proposal, Clamont's offered to resurface Fruit Street. Uh, and I do point out that it is a public way, uh, and it's being used daily by Mass DOT. Uh, but in order to provide a better surface for access to my client's site, he's proposed certain roadway improvements that are set forth in the plans and is willing to make those improvements, uh, even though it is a public way. Uh, so I think, I think my letter of October seventh, uh, addressed to Mr. Romulus, I, I think I, I touched on what the concerns were, uh, that were raised by someone. I'm, I'm not quite sure whom. But I stand by my letter. We have full access and the right to use the right-of-way.
Okay, and we, the, the question came up because we were trying to figure out if we had the, the right to ask you to repave that or not and whose jurisdiction was under.
It's a public way and we've offered to resurface it.
So, so based on, based on your, um, the information you provided, the town engineer came up with a recommendation today, correct, Mr. Romulus?
Yes, that's correct.
And was that shared with the applicant?
It was.
Yes.
And, and could you explain that to the, the board and the public so everybody understands what the town engineer is, is asking for?
Uh, yes, so, um, the basis of it is that the, um, town engineer would just like understand the condition of the road as it is. And, um, once there is testing done on the road to determine its condition, I, he wanted to then create a scope of work, uh, for repaving the road and then to also ensure that the applicant actually does, uh, implement said scope of work for, um, repaving the road. And so I, I did draft several conditions, um, that, um, that relay, uh, what I just said and sent it to the applicant as well.
And I don't have it in front of me, but there's a timeline. So the, the borings would have to be done prior to the issuance of a building permit and then the completion of the paving would have to be done prior to occupancy?
Uh, yes, so, um, if you want, I can read through the specific conditions.
No, that, that we can talk of, I just wanted to make sure the applicant saw it and the board knew what we'd be discussing when we discuss the decision, that's all.
Yes, so there will be testing and the scope of work, um, will be done before a building permit. And then actually implementing the scope of work will be done before an occupancy permit.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Yes, please. On the, um, twenty nineteen letter to, from the DOT, it was stated, apparently that was the discussion that, um, Clamont had with DOT was the building was going to be ninety-two thousand square feet. It's now a hundred and three thousand square feet. Does that make a difference with DOT at all? Do they know it's going to be a hundred and three?
If I may jump in, um, within those MEPA approvals, there's some flexibility if the project changes a little bit, um, before you have to go back with a notice of project change. The, the size difference in this project is, and given the, the level of traffic generation from opposed use, is, is a very minimal change, um, you know, and, and overall trips over the course of a day. And it really doesn't even result in any change in the afternoon peak hour trips. So there isn't anything that would require us to go back to MEPA and review that process with Mass DOT is what was presented to them previously was, was nearly identical from a traffic perspective to what's proposed currently.
Actually, on the, uh, on the MEPA certificate that issued in twenty eighteen, there's a notation that the building was originally, uh, identified as, uh, ninety-two thousand and has been changed to a hundred and three thousand. So the MEPA certificate took that into consideration.
That answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, um, board questions?
I refuse, unless somebody else wants to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Jimmy.
All right. The, uh, the waiver issue, I just, I just like an answer from somebody from the proponent. Our waivers paragraph says strict compliance with the requirements of these rules and regulations may be waived only when, in the judgment of the board, such action is the public, is in the public interest and inconsistent, and inconsistent with public good. What is the, uh, public interest in the waiver on these, on this development?
Well, Mr. What waiver were you, are you referring?
It is the waiver of connect, correct, connecting the, uh, a pedestrian, pedestrian walkway from this building into, over to the remaining buildings.
Maybe the other one to the wetland.
I'm sorry?
The wetland.
Yes, it would require that the walkway go through the wetlands, which are very extensive. Uh, and it appears that the, the, the potential benefit would outweigh the, the effort to go through the wetlands to accomplish that walkway.
How about going within the hundred-foot buffer?
The wetlands actually bisect the two parcels of land. So.
There is, there, there is no.
You can't get to the remainder of the park without dealing with the wetland issue.
There is no, there is no feasible way, Ray, to actually do any kind of pedestrian access to the others, the other elements of, uh, Lake Shore Drive. This, there is not. The, there never was intended to actually be any, uh, connection because if physically, there's too much wetlands in between, the wetlands are significant and, um, there's really no benefit to it anyway. But there is, uh, there is no way to do it from a, a permitting point of view because it would mean alteration of, uh, uh, land, uh, within the ACEC, uh, in the actual wetlands.
If you, if you look at the plans on page sheets four, five, four and five, you see the wetland line to the east. That, that actually covers all of the potential access over to the remaining part of this, uh, of, of this park. And you couldn't get over to the other buildings to Lake Shore Center Drive without crossing wetlands. Now, I didn't look to see what it would be if you used the DOT property, but of course that's not an option to us.
Right, my, my main question then is, um, could just, it seems to me that, uh, the pushback you're getting from the, uh, abutters is generally, uh, revolves around the size of the building. In other words, much of the complaint would be, would be corrected by a smaller building, I guess. And what I'm saying is traffic, uh, buffering and so forth, lights and whatever. Um, what's the rationale for not making it smaller?
I mean, Larry, you can address, I mean, it's the cost of the building.
Well, and it's, it's also from, and also from a marketing point of view, warehouses that are under a hundred thousand, uh, square feet in area are, that's a, that's a totally different market, the ones that are above a hundred thousand. Um, the market studies that were done by Clamont, um, clearly showed that, uh, that they needed to be at that level in order to be able to compete with other, uh, warehousing sites, uh, in Massachusetts.
There, there's a, there's another figure that, uh, I'm looking through my notes to see if I could find it from prior hearings. And, uh, maybe Larry, you know it, but when you look at the entire Clamont site of about a hundred and sixty acres, uh, the full potential build-out of this is still going to leave, and I'm going to say fifty acres. And I, I'll stand, be corrected if I'm wrong, but it could be as much as fifty acres will remain open tree and wetlands. So I, I think, you know, the, the total development of the project has taken the, the, uh, ecological features of this site into consideration. There's been extensive work on the other buildings to mitigate. And this building, we meet and comply with zoning. Uh, we've worked within the Wetland Protection Act. We've worked within the town's conservation bylaw. And, uh, I think it's a, it's a reasonable proposal, uh, for, to clear the ten acres to accommodate this building and extensive, extensive upgrades to Fruit Street, which is a public way, which is a benefit to the town. Because the, the town could have to do that at some point in time. I mean, there are taxpayers with frontage on that road. And so I think there's a, there's a benefit to the town in that regard as well.
And if I could, if I could also add to that, um, Ray, when you ask about the hundred thousand, um, what was clear when this, uh, project was being designed and when it was being costed out, was that this site required significant amount of off-site improvements in order to, uh, to actually build it. And those included, you know, the Fruit Street improvements and the extension of natural gas, uh, a, a sewer line, a brand-new water main all the way down. Uh, there's a lot of cost to developing this site, which cannot be offset by buildings which are, which are smaller than, than a hundred thousand square feet.
By environmentally speaking, just the bringing of the sewer over to this side of one oh four, which is going to be and is available to all of the residents that are on the lake whose Title V systems eventually will fail. They're going to have the benefit of that infrastruc- sewer infrastructure available to them when the time comes.
And that's, it's always been, it's always been available to them since, uh, since Clamont extended the sewer in two thousand. But they extended it at their cost for three miles from North Street to their project, to the first building that was constructed then, with an understanding that that was going to provide the ability for the town to extend sewer into the neighborhoods in that area. Uh, I should also point out that, um, by bringing the sewer line into this site, it also affords the opportunity of the state facilities to be, uh, put on sewer as well.
And lastly, um, maybe somebody could answer some of the residents, the abutters' questions regarding buffering, solar panels, uh, lighting, things like that. They brought it up a number of times. I'm not sure whether that's been addressed.
I think there, I think there was a, a lighting plan submitted with.
Oh, there was, yes. Light, lighting and landscaping.
Oh, light shed over to adjacent properties, uh, is a standard condition, I believe.
Right, and there is, this is, this is a, a site that really has, uh, not, not even a, a remote chance of having light carryover to other properties. Certainly properties along one oh four, um, that, that, you know, there was a comment made about in the wintertime, there's going to be, um, you know, clear visibility to this. You won't see anything, uh, from one oh four as far as this building, even in the wintertime. This is substantial, substantial amount of, of area, wooded area, uh, to the site, to the building, uh, portion of this site.
Mr. Silver, is, is the, is the lighting plan utilizing only downlighting and night sky lighting?
Um, well, in the areas where they might potentially have, uh, an, an impact to other abutting properties, um, I do believe that there are some shielded wall packs on the building itself. Uh, the lighting plan was done by, uh, by the same, um, uh, company that did the landscaping, which is Hawk. So, you know, so, and they're familiar with, uh, the concerns about lighting in this area. They did the, uh, lighting plans for, uh, a couple of the other projects.
What, what would the impacts be if we asked for the, the fixtures to be shielded for, for downlighting? Or would there be any?
No.
I, I suspect it's already done as a condition that.
Mr. Jimmy, any other questions? Okay. Um, the, the landscape, the landscape plan. Oh, somebody needs to be muted. Um, the landscape plan, the board, the boards have the opportunity to review the tree planting schedule and everything. Any other questions before we turn it over to public comment or?
Question off of Mr. Romulus, the, uh, the hundred-foot buffer zone, to my understanding, is the only thing that buffer zone does is trigger a view by Concom if they want to build inside that hundred feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
Outside of that, it's really not a planning concern as long as it trips and Concom reviews it. If Concom's fine with whatever goes on in that buffer zone, that's kind of that. Okay, thank you. that's kinda that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Romulus, you ought to open up to the public comment.
Yes. So, um, it looks like the comments made by the public um, were from Janet Hansen, Pat Mary, Melissa Raymondetta. Looks like there was one from Carlton Hunt. If he would like to speak on the issue.
Well, I get, yeah, it seems like those are the people just going through the, the chat. So if any of them would like to speak, they could raise their hand.
Uh, so Carlton Hunt, um, if he would like to unmute.
Uh, hi. I just, very quick question regarding traffic. If it's mostly trucks, would they be coming in on the evening and the nighttime so that they're not in peak traffic or is it anticipated that they'd be coming in on peak traffic? Cause I travel that area a lot during peak traffic and I still have got, not been backed up more than five cars at the street, at the light.
Uh, some of that depends on the ultimate user, but generally with the, this type of use, they don't occur within the, the typical commuter peak periods from a business operation standpoint and what, what they're doing. It, it just leads them to have their operations outside of those, those peak hours and they tend to spread out. They don't have condensed peak hours in and of themselves.
I know the poor, uh, company that has, uh, transfers, uh, their own storage and transfer facility on Elm Street, they asked for, uh, uh, a certain nighttime and early morning leaving because they had to leave at 5:00 a.m. Well before traffic was going on and they came back in the midday to the late afternoon before traffic. And they were given that waiver, uh, when they went before the board, one of the boards. So I, I, I just wanna make people under- have people understand that this may not be a facility. If it's a research facility and you're doing some kind of production there, you might have that kind of a shift change. But if it's just a warehouse, warehousing and, and trucks coming in and out from that, I suspect that that would be mostly in the off-hours. It's just a point that people need to think about. Thank you.
Uh, so there are two, uh, participants that have raised their hands. It looks like, um, Melissa Raymondetta, um, if you would like to, um, go ahead.
Hi, um, Melissa Raymondetta, 317 Lakeside Drive. Thank you for hearing my comments. Um, a couple of things. Um, you know, this, this project is part of this Phase Three development, large-scale development by Clermont. Um, this is an industrial commercial park, which fills, fits in with the zoning of the planned development district. And that is how I believe it's being regarded here. However, I'm, we're being told that the traffic issues, the Phase Three project, it's in its entirety should not be considered during this hearing or in this, uh, with this project. Um, I find it contradictory and concerning. My second comment is that there was, um, you know, th- this building is, is not connected to the industrial commercial park because of the wetlands that we've heard a lot about. And we even heard about the fact that the wetlands reside within an A C E C, so they couldn't be built upon. So my comment to you is, if those wetlands are within an A C E C and cannot be built upon or touched, why are we then talking about a hundred-foot buffer zone within a wetland within an A C E C where a building is being built, um, drainage, et cetera? These are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the, I think there's still a misconception about the hundred feet. The hundred-foot buffer starts at the wetland line and extends into the uplands. So when you trigger the jurisdiction under the Wetland Protection Act, the jurisdiction of the Concom, and you say you're gonna work within the hundred feet, you're not working in wetlands. You're working within a hundred feet of the wetland line. And Bridgewater, on top of that, has a twenty-five-foot no-touch. So even though under the Wetland Protection Act, the Conservation Commission could let you build right up to the wetland line, Bridgewater has their local bylaw, which, which is more stringent and says you can't build within twenty-five feet of the wetland. So this hundred feet does not go into wetlands. So if there's any understanding that we're gonna be building in wetlands, uh, that, that's incorrect.
Okay, Melissa Raymondetta, 317 Lakeside Drive, that wasn't my intention to say you were building in the, in the wetlands. I understand it's a hundred-foot buffer. I wanna reiterate here that the designation of an A C E C increases environmental oversight by increasing state permitting standards through elevated performance standards and lowering thresholds for review. This is straight from the state website. Just wanna make that point and I do hope that I, I thank the planning board for hearing my concerns and comments.
Uh, it looks like the, uh, Janet Hansen has her hand raised, if you would like to, um, make your comment. Uh, Janet Hansen. Uh, it looks like she's still muted.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, I can go back. Um, I think the only other comment I saw in the, um, at, uh, was from a Jay Callahan. Looks like the, it says the T R W A agrees that the plan as proposed is overly excessive for this area located within the Hockamop Swamp A C E C. I believe and encourage the proponent to modify its plan to extend possible minimize impervious covers, uh, footprint and preserve natural land features. Um, better B M Ps such as pervious pavement or pavers that use infiltration-like gravel wetlands as the stormwater management control system help to mitigate groundwater recharge loss and pollutant loading. Uh, I don't know if, uh.
Just so everybody understands it. So, so Mr. Romulus, we have a, as part of our design criteria, actually more groundwater has to be recharged than is currently, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and so we have a, we have what they call a ninety pre and post, so, so, so yeah, so the engineer, I believe, Mr. Silver, provides with, with an analysis of how much water sheds off the property now. And theoretically, ten, ten percent less should shed off once this is, is being built and more should be recharged through the, the structures that are provided. Is that correct?
That is correct. So there, so there's a ninety percent requirement in Bridgewater. So instead of in most towns, uh, you just cannot increase the peak rate of runoff. Uh, and that's usually the criteria. In, in Bridgewater, it's a ninety percent reduction in the peak ra- rate of runoff and ninety percent, uh, reduction in the volume of runoff. So that ten percent, uh, reduction uh, is an increase in the amount that's being recharged. And, uh, basically, uh, for the most part, uh, m- most of the runoff is being recharged for, uh, uh, for most, uh, smaller events. It's only in larger events that water will be discharged from the, uh, from the basin itself. And everything goes through a, a cleaning process, uh, prior to it, uh, going anywhere. You cannot recharge until you actually clean the water. Uh, so with the exception of roof runoff that qualifies for direct recharge, all other runoff has to go through a cleaning process before it can, uh, be eligible for, uh, for an infiltration or recharge system. So believe me, uh, there's a lot of care taken in, in the drainage design here. And I should also point out, the question that was raised about it being in the A C E C, in the A C E C, that's, uh, also trips another threshold that says that it's, that you have to, um, do in the first flush of the, uh, the smaller storms, you have to actually treat twice as much, an inch of rainfall instead of a half inch of rainfall uh, in that, uh, in that first flush. So there's a lot of things that are part of this design, which is, uh, uh, aimed at protecting the wetlands and the A C E C.
Do you have any other comments or board questions?
Uh, yes, I think, uh, Janet Hansen, uh, was able to uh, rectify her technical difficulties.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Janet Hansen, six, six, five Pleasant Street. I appreciate you reading my letter and I hope some of that is taken into consideration as, um, we all have kind of the same concerns about the size. Um, I realize about the twenty-five foot, um, restriction, not that I necessarily agree with it, cause that's less than a vacuum cleaner cord, so it's not very much. But, um, that being said, I don't understand, just because you're allowed to go that close, do you really have to go that close? But I also wanna know, have you received the C C's, um, C C C's definite decision yet? Cause I listened to their meeting, um, last week and they closed it, but they have twenty-one days to present their decision. They didn't make a public decision. Did you, the planning board, receive a decision from them yet or is that still in their ballpark? And.
I think, what you, what, uh, you just said, uh, Hansen, that's correct. They have now made the decision yet.
Yeah, so they don't have that decision yet, so I think you need to, I would think you would need to wait for that, maybe not. I don't know all the ins and outs of these meetings, but I question that, but the other thing is, I still wanna know, the applicant must have some idea of what businesses they're trying to attract or they, you know, you can't, I wouldn't expect that you would just build something in hopes that something go in there. Has that ever been brought up as to what businesses are expected to be in here? But I, the most important thing to me is preserving the area as much as possible. I understand the plans, um, are to protect it. I don't agree with going right up to pushing the limits. If you can reduce it, it might make some people happier. Those are my comments. I just was wondering what the C C C plan's decision has been, if you received it, and I thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I could just answer the question relative to the building itself. Uh, we, we were the ones involved in the one up on Elm Street. Uh, quite clearly, that client with a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, uh, it is not unusual for them to build the, the building and then, uh, find a tenant for it. And that's, uh, kind of the way that this industry works, is that the ones that are looking for warehousing are looking for it when it's actually constructed or under construction and af- or after it's permitted. So in, in the case of Elm Street, um, it's not, uh, are you still in the process of actually working out leases with, uh, with, uh, a company for that location? And I would expect that the same will occur here when they're looking for a tenant.
Well, I have a question, maybe you can answer it, Mr. Romulus, and maybe it would provide some clarification. For every zone in town, there's a lot of uses, that, you know, types of businesses that can go into a building and operate in building, correct?
Yes.
But in addition to the planned development, a lot of uses, we also have a Zone Two use table or, uh, types of business that are prohibited, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
So even though that's a rainham zone two, I believe our protection of those types of businesses that are prohibited would, would apply to this or would it not apply? A Zone Two is a Zone Two, but it doesn't matter if it's a Bridgewater or Rainham, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. The applicant, you know, they applied for the special permit through the Land Development District overlay, so.
No, no, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that's, that's fine, but then if, if, let's say, and, let's say an oil change company wanted to go in there, which, which wouldn't, but I'm just using that as an example, right? So i- in a, if you look at a Zone Two allowed uses, it doesn't allow the storage of more than X amount of oil, so technically, one of those companies couldn't go there. So all, all I'm trying to say is, there's already some protection built into our zoning and we allow it to prohibited uses Zone Two, in addition to, in addition to what's allowed in a planned development district.
Yes.
So I think what we're trying to prevent is like, you know, you know, a hazardous waste company or something going there, they couldn't go there because it's prohibited under our Zone Two zoning.
Yes.
Mr. Silver, do you agree with that or no?
Yeah, I, I do, and if you remember correctly, uh, on Bethed Street, uh, next to the, in the Armory, next to the Armory, the site that went in there, there was concerns about the nature and whether or not that business fell within that uh, type of exemption or not. Uh, that one was, uh, that was, uh, uh, that was borderline, yeah, but the property next to it, there was, um, if you remember, there was the pesticide company who eventually went to, uh, West Bridgewater, that wanted to locate on that property next to the, the gym there, to the right of the Armory. And, uh, because of the concerns about the environmental aspects of it being in the Zone Two, uh, they chose to relocate up in, uh, in West Bridgewater. So yeah, the aquifer protection bylaw comes into play and it provides another level of safeguard as to what would possibly go on the site. And for, quite honestly, it's a research and development company might be the way that it, that it might go. I mean, that's, there's a, there's a big demand for that at this point.
Mr. Chairman, uh, back in August, I, thirty-first, I sent a letter that was read into the record previously, but it touched on a little bit about, uh, tenants in the park. And, uh, I'd just like to reiterate that, you know, Clermont has brought to the town of Bridgewater its own, uh, its own corporate headquarters. It has, uh, Bella Insurance, Bank of America, Beacon Health, Senior Whole Life, New York Life, Mass Ionia and Ketchikan Law. Those are all blue chip, first-class credit-worthy tenants and, and it, Bridgewater should be very, very happy to have tenants of that type. Uh, there were times when there was empty space in the Clermont buildings, but they held out for a first-class tenant. Uh, I don't think anything's going to change. Uh, research and development is an allowed use in a planned development district. In the one twenty-eight, four ninety-five belt, I understand that recently companies like Samsonite, Nestle, Seaman, Rebound Therapeutics and other R and D, uh, companies have recently gotten space in the one twenty-eight, four ninety-five belt. So, uh, those are similar type tenants or possibilities for this building. And my client's willing to build it and then it will wait for the correct tenants. It always has.
Are there any other board questions or public comment?
I'd just like to make one comment, Mr. Driscoll. To, uh, Attorney Brennan and, uh, Larry, um, you know, you, you pointed out, uh, Larry, about regarding the detention basins on site that they've all been maintained properly. And I, I totally believe you. I, I'm, I'm sure, and Attorney Brennan, you mentioned the, the clot, the, uh, the tenants that have been brought in have been good and, and I don't doubt that either. What I just wanna make clear is that we on this board, our main purpose, at least in my mind, is to protect the town. And so even though something's been done in the past that's been proper and good. And so even though something's been done in the past that's been proper and good, does not mean future is going to be that way. And I, I just, it occurred to me that, for instance, the Boeing Corporation has, going back, how many, I don't know, eighty years, nine years, made outstanding airplane. And yet, when they came out with the MAX eight, whatever they called it, the seven thirty, seven thirty-seven, they had two crashes where hundreds of people died. They died because the federal government did not do the proper oversight that they should have done in designing those airplanes. And all I'm saying is that if we sound like we're being overly protective, that's our job. And that, uh, I, I hope you appreciate that.
I, I understand, I understand that and I'm familiar with the documentation that you'll be looking for. I'll be, I think you'll be very comfortable with it when you sit. So if that's a condition of approval, I have no issues with that.
Any other board questions or public comment? All right, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Aaron.
Yes, I had my hand raised, but I wasn't recognized. I wanted to just ask um, about whether you can uh, increase a buffer along Route twenty-four. It's not on the plan now, but do you have that authority? This is Pat Neary, by the way, two twenty-five Lakeside. And since you don't know who the tenants will be, um, is, does that plan allow for the maximum parking spaces for that location? Because you don't know who the tenants are? And also, once the property is built out, what control do you have over what tenants are allowed? Suppose they want to put in like a safety clean, which is against our regulations. Is that just something they could do if they felt like it?
Well, that would be up to, Mr. Romulus, that would be up to the zoning enforcement officer to approve the, the use, correct? And if the use didn't comply with our zoning, then that.
But I'm talking about a tenant, not the use for the building, a tenant. Once the building is built, you have no interaction with a tenant.
Well, we, well, recently, and Mr. Romulus could do, so we've had several buildings that have been built and they have wanted to put different tenants in there. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Romulus, but we've had a number of these recently in Firework Circle. If they wanted to go to it from an automotive or a construction use or vice versa, we actually had them come in for a modification to the site plan to make sure that the site could handle it and that the um, the tenant was appropriate. So I would imagine that if the uses are different than what they're proposing, then they would have to come back to us for a modification and would reevaluate parking and drain and, you know, spill, all, all those things if, if needed. Am I correct in that assumption, Mr. Romulus?
You're correct.
Reevaluate the parking after it's all been done? So if the math would work out now that you would put in the maximum parking spaces for how many tenants they might have, um, that would probably be a better way to go, but I'm not on the planning board.
Well, we, we have had, um, most recently, the one I can think about was Firework Circle. We did have them increase the parking and restrike it, correct, Mr. Romulus?
After the fact?
That's correct.
After the fact, yes.
And um, if I may add to that point, um, if the concerns are protecting the um, environment and the wetland surrounding, to maximize the impervious surface may pose, um, especially if the applicant has already met the um, the standards.
And is there any way you can have each tenant come to you for approval? A special permit for a tenant?
I don't think that's completely outside of the scope of what special permits are for, but I might be, might be off on that.
Well, I, I think there's a lot of uses. And if a tenant complies with that use, Mr. Romulus, that they can go in there. If they, if they don't comply with that use, they'd have to come back to us for modification and we, with.
How will you even know about it? If I have a, a place to rent and I want to allow that tenant in, how would you know about that?
Well, that's, we, we rely on the zoning enforcement officer to, you know, to field complaints and, and to monitor that. That's, so the, what, the, the zoning is up to the, is up to the, is up to, the zoning enforcement's up to the zoning enforcement officer.
Who is the building inspector?
Yes.
Correct, it's Mr. Solari.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So just get, trying to get some feedback from the board. We, we have a draft decision letter from um, Mr. Romulus. We went over a number of additional things this evening that I, that I just jotted down, such as the intersection. And do we um, want to add that turn lane or put that in as part of the road reconstruction, stop signs, et cetera? The lighting, I don't know if we want to add the lighting as downlighting or night skylighting. Uh, we mentioned the O and M plan, um, and perhaps establishing an easement to, to be uh, reviewed by a town attorney and, and by the applicant's attorney, Attorney Brennan, and to be recorded um, prior to occupancy. Um, we talked about the resurfacing improvements that I think were already captured with coring. Um, we discussed the waiver and I believe we'd have to vote on that waiver at nine point six five. Um, in, in here, Mr. Um, Romulus also talks about offsite tree planting. I don't know if that's still a concern of the board, if we want to address that, if Clermont has thought about that, um, and, and where we proceed from here, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have, I have one question. And I know that traffic may be outside the realm of what we're supposed to be talking about, but could we put any type of stipulation in stating that once this building's at full occupancy, that a traffic study be done? And if any improvements need to be done for the intersection, should be considered?
Well.
Or is that outside our realm?
So he, here's my thought and you guys can tell me what you think. In absent, we have a meeting next Wednesday, okay?
Yep.
In absence of not having the town uh, engineer here and, and looking at the decision letter that is provided to us, I think some things need to be updated and changed. And we also want to incorporate something potentially about the intersection, the O and M easement, resurfacing, tree planting, et cetera. Uh, we could close the public hearing now. We could deliberate a little bit, give feedback to Mr. Romulus as to what we'd like to see in the decision letter and have him um, collaborate with the town engineer on these. Um, you know, I think he got some of these already in terms of pesticides and, and salt treatments, et cetera. And then we could, we could close the public hearing tonight, have some deliberation tonight about what we want to see in the decision letter, have a finalized decision letter presented to us with what we want incorporated and then deliberate and vote on it at the next, at the next meeting. If, if we so choose, or we could move forward tonight with everything. It's, it's up to you, it's up to the board.
Um, Mr. Chair, my feeling is I'm not ready to make a decision tonight, so I would prefer going to another meeting.
Okay, just so we don't rehash um, issues, I mean, I, I think we have all the issues on the table now. Um, we have the ability to deliberate as a board and to continue this discussion. Um, I think we know what the issues are. We've, we've heard them for a couple of meetings. Are we okay with closing the public hearing, providing feedback to the town um, engineer and, and planning staff and deliberating on this, just having our deliberation at the next meeting and voting at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think the, the Concom Commission's going to be kind of the, the linchpin on this one anyways, uh, given that it's operating so close to the islands. So I mean, once that comes in, uh, let's see, that's going to inform our decision quite heavily, I think. So as far as putting it to the next meeting, uh, that should be, should be just fine.
Well, I, I, I think that the, the Concom has their job to do and we have our job to do. And we, I, I mean, I think with, we, we spent several hours on the issues. I think we've done a good job listening to the public and each other and going through the issues. I, I think the draft decision letter combined with the, the um, the, the items, the, the seven or eight items that I wrote down tonight, um, kind of, kind of captured the issues. Do we, do we want to close the public hearing and continue our deliberation and give um, Mr. Romulus some direction on how to proceed with the decision letter or what we'd like to see?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm going to agree with that.
Mr. Jimmy?
From my perspective, I'm, I'm willing to close the public hearing, but I'd like to just sort of ponder some things myself and then maybe at the next meeting, we can talk about uh, what the uh, if we approve what the um, decision letter will say.
Oh, oh, absolutely, absolutely. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do is we need some feedback from Mr. Antonero. Because one thing that we didn't, that has been brought up in two meetings is that intersection and that left turning lane. So do we want to condition that as part of the road reconstruction, that left turning lane and stop signs, et cetera, will be evaluated? And if needed, will be, will become part of that road reconstruction? I mean, I think that should be incorporated into the decision letter as well. Um, lighting and downlighting. And do we want to have night skylighting as a downlighting? We should have that reviewed again to see what's being proposed and if we want additional, because lighting is something that kept coming up. I, I think that we could put in a condition, I don't think Attorney Brennan has to provide it now, but it, a condition that says, you know, prior to occupancy, an easement will be given and the O and M plan will be attached to it, um, allowing the town of Bridgewater the right to inspect and, you know, enforce that, that drainage.
I, I can have that by next week, Mr. Chair.
And we have, we have, thank you, Attorney Brennan. And we have the resurface improvements already, already proposed. Um, I, I don't know if we still want to talk about trees and tree planting onsite or offsite, um, or mitigation for tree planting or where we are with that. Um, the tenant thing I wrote down, that's kind of handled through zoning. And I, I think we're going to need to vote on that waiver, um, in addition to the, as a waiver and put that in the decision letter as well, Mr. Romulus, correct?
That's correct.
I guess one concern, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just one concern I would have is a, maybe a, Mr. Romulus can answer this. Would, would a week be enough time for Mr. Don Tonero and uh, the, the rest of the planning staff to uh, you know, evaluate all that and then draft all that kind of a, kind of things?
Uh, yes, I think the only um, additional uh, you know, comment would be the turn signal, uh, or the turn lane rather. Um, but that should be resolved within the week.
Okay, yeah, if the department's comfortable with that timeframe, I'm comfortable with it.
Well, turn lane and any other needed improvements, you know, like signage or right turn only on a fruit street. But I think, I think engineering really needs to evaluate that. And, and you know, that, that was a good point brought up about with that DOT letter. And I think the lighting and the O and M suggestion that Mr. Jimmy had were all good suggestions, so.
Um, I, Mr. McDonald may have made a good point in that uh, is one week enough. I mean, first of all, we need Mr. Antonero at the meeting uh, next week. And Attorney Brennan, you said you could um, put something together for a mainscreen, which I'm sure you could. But it also, I would like to have our town council approve it also. And, and, and that, I'm not sure all this can be done within a week.
Could, could that be a, a condition of that, that, you know, the, the covenant and the maintenance and operation and easements be a condition of the approval subject to town council's approval?
It could, I would, I would, I would prefer to see what, that you, if you're going to write it up, that the town engineer first look at it and give it his approval, then go to the town council with his approval. Um, that would be fine with me.
Do we just, do we just want to make that a condition, right, that the staff handles all that and it goes through that process?
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's so many little things going on. I think we need to sort of get our heads together in terms of how we're going to put this together. I'm just, I have no problem talking about it at the next meeting, discussing it. I'm just wondering whether we have enough time to really.
All right, all right. So, so why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we close the public, vote, if, if we, if we have a vote to close the public hearing, we close the public hearing for next week, because uh, next week, just looking at the schedule, we have Broad Street continuation. I, I don't know if the department's received anything on that yet, that may or may not go forward, that may be continued. Why don't we at least put on, put this on for the next meeting for, for the board discussion and deliberation? If, if we can further discuss it, we'll have more information in a week. And if we feel comfortable, we can vote. If we don't, we can push it to the next meeting. But I, I'd like to just, just to keep everything moving, um, close the public hearing and put it on for the next meeting for deliberation.
I, I think it's a good idea, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, I'll put it on and see what happens.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit on uh, Fruit Street. Do, do we have a second by Michael?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't want to cut anybody else off from the board, so is there any other discussion?
What you guys have.
Okay, and the only thing I would, I would, um, you know, I, I can provide you with an email of, of this, Mr. Romulus, but we talked about traffic lighting, O and M plan, resurfacing, which I think already captured, trees, tenants, which I think we already captured, waiver, um, you know, just those are some things, if we could have those prepared for the next meeting and have, have input from the town engineers, we can try to be efficient with time and, and move it along. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, any other questions from the board?
I, I just want to emphasize that I think it's extremely important that the town engineer be at the next meeting.
I, I agree. Um, all right, so Mr. Geller? Mr. Geller, are you there?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, I think, I think we made some good headways, so thank you. And the, the next meeting is only a week away, so.
Yeah, thank you very much to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So um, it, it looks like uh, when I was moving forward here, um, when I was moving through the, the list of participants, I saw that Antonio DeFries um, signed on and he is with um, Michael Cosco Associates. So if we wouldn't mind inviting him into the meeting and bouncing back to the Form A by Quail Hollow LLC.
Certainly.
Tony, you there?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if you were on early, but we had um, a little bit of discussion about this Form A and there was some confusion as to what was going on, so we'd like you just to present the Form A for us.
Yeah, first, can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This meeting is going to go off.
The uh, what we have here is a A and R plan for two thirty-two Beach Street. Uh, you've seen uh, an A and R before on this property, which divided uh, which subdivided uh, two one-acre lots and what was shown as unbuildable lot. Now, fast forward, uh, the current owner has sold some property to the developer, Quail Hollow. So what's happening now is uh, two thirty-two, there's two lots being created here. One being Lot One A, in which two thirty-two Beach Street. And that will remain and that lot will have uh, five, just over five acres of uh, area and a total of four hundred and sixty squi- uh, four hundred and sixty linear feet at the street and four hundred and seventy, just over four hundred and seventy feet at the forty-foot setback. Uh, there's a second lot being created, which is shown as Lot Two A on the plan. And what's happening there is um, the current owner also owned a piece of land in the back, which was behind one eighty-one Beach Street. So if you look at the plan, there's a label that says Lot Two A. That, that was in itself a parcel of land. It had no frontage. So what's happening now is the way you see a dashed line, it says formal. So what's happening now is the way you see a dashed line that says formal lot line to be eliminated, that line will be eliminated. That back land will be combined with the land out front. Now creating frontage at the street. Uh, and frontage at the setback. Um, your total frontage at the street at Lot 2A is five hundred and sixty. And the total frontage at the setback is five fifty eight. So you have two lots, large lots, uh, but both meet, uh, the criteria for an A and R. They're fronting on a public street that's maintained by the town of Bridgewater. They have sufficient frontage for the zone that they're in. And they each have vital access to their, uh, buildable areas, obviously. Lot 1A to the existing house and Lot 2A. Uh, though there are some wetlands, uh, access is, uh, available through the hundred foot part of the zone. So that's what we're proposing on this plan. That's pretty, that's pretty much it.
Okay, and Mr. Romulus, you stated earlier that this was reviewed by both you and the town engineer. And I'm looking at the analysis and everything complies, so you don't, do you have any additional comments on this?
I do not.
Are there any additional board comments or questions? No, no additional board comments? Do we have a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse.
By Mr. Geller? Do you have a second?
A second. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
You'll second, by Michael, I'm just looking for my roll call here. So motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? So I'll start with, um, Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough? Mrs. Greenough?
Well, it looks like she was bounced out, um, but came back in recently.
Okay, well, we'll skip her, so. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we could do, uh, four, four in favor and do we put her down as an abstention, uh, Mrs. Dora, or no?
I guess so. She's trying to connect right now, but.
But she didn't abstain, she just, she just.
We'll just have the vote four to zero then, okay? Alright. Um, moving on, uh, Tony, why we have you here? Do you mind, uh, staying on and we'll do the, the laying out and acceptance of the, of the private way?
Sure.
Alright, so, um, Mr. Romulus? So, 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 Mr. Romulus, what, what are we doing this evening? Are we just voting to give a non-binding recommendation? Are we voting on the bond as well? And are we voting on the as-built or are we just voting on the non-binding recommendation?
Uh, so tonight, at the very least, we should be voting on the non-binding recommendation to the town council. Um, the town engineer had suggested that also, um, vote for the bond, uh, calculation as well as the as-built.
Alright, so, so I think the first thing we should do before we give a, a non-binding recommendation is to, is to go over the as-built, so the final as-built. So, so Tony, do you mind walking us through the final as-built?
Um, they, uh, constructed the road, uh, according to the approved plans. Uh, drainage is in and functioning. Uh, sidewalks are in, everything's been completed. Uh, roadway monuments have been set. Uh, final paving's done, so, um, and, and landscaping is, was, uh, done, I believe, in the spring. All the trees were put in. So everything that's required under the as-built, uh, regulations and requirements that, as far as we can see.
And we, we do have a, we have a road, so what was submitted, Mr. Romulus, was a roadway acceptance plan?
Yes.
And a final as-built or just a roadway acceptance plan?
Uh, roadway acceptance plan. Um, the only thing that I would, uh, mention to the applicant, which the town engineer had, uh, also mentioned was, uh, to resubmit one, uh, set of the roadway plans with a, um, endorsement block for the planning board so that we can, um, sign off on it as in as-built.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can do that, get that tomorrow, tomorrow.
So, so just because we're giving a recommendation for acceptance, so there's no, uh, Mr. Mr. Antonero, just looking through the, um, the, the emails, they've made several inspections, they, uh, made some recommendations, those rec, those, those items were fixed. And, um, we should probably withhold, we should probably hold the five thousand dollar final as-built, uh, money until that's submitted, correct, Mr. Romulus?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. And it's this board's recommendation to, uh, and, and the town engineer and Mr. LeDoux's recommendation to, give a non-binding recommendation for street acceptance, correct?
Yes.
Alright.
Maybe I missed it. Did Highway make a recommendation?
Yes, both Highway and the town engineer.
Thank you.
But we still need, just for our records, um, the, um, the final as-built, correct?
Yes, uh, and the applicant has said that he'll drop it off tomorrow morning or tomorrow.
Okay. Alright, and we already have a preliminary, so we know everything's where it's supposed to be anyway, correct, Mr. De Frees?
Yes, uh, and the, and the acceptance plan and the as-built are pretty much the same, same plan. There really isn't any difference, uh, but we'll add, I'll add the block and I'll, I'll print one out and get it up to Mr. Romulus, uh, to get to the board.
Now, are any of those my lives that we need, um, Elijah?
No.
Okay. The street acceptance plan has to be a my life or does it not, Tony?
Uh, well, that would probably be a my life, because it's gonna get signed off and recorded, uh, in the registry. Along with the, you know, uh, roadway descriptions that we provided.
But the, but the council is gonna, um.
Yeah, the council will be endorsing that because they'll be the one accepting the, the, the roadway as the, the board, the planning board, in their capacity, makes the recommendation to that, that body as to whether everything has been met and it's, and it's, and it's ready for acceptance, that's probably what.
Okay. Any, uh, board questions or comments? So, we're not, the only thing we're voting on tonight then, Mr. Romulus, is the laying out of an acceptance of a public way, non-binding recommendation, correct?
The acceptance, um, the bond calculation and, uh, approval of the as-built.
Well, we don't have the as-belts, right?
So the as-built is literally the roadway acceptance plan.
Okay.
Having an endorsement block.
Alright, and then, um, do we have a record, do we have a request from the applicant for the bond release?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we vote on the acceptance of the finalized belt and a non-binding recommendation, and then we can, um, have them request a bond request for the next meeting with the finalized belt, and we can probably release that five thousand dollars at that time too, if we get the finalized belt, right? And just do it all at once?
Yes, we can do that.
Well, there's typically a five thousand dollars for the maintenance of the detention basin also.
That we retain, okay. Alright, so.
So, we don't have to do that this, tonight.
Is there any discussion on the, um, request from the council to give a recommendation on street acceptance for Oglesway?
No, but, uh, regarding the as-built, if we actually don't have it, why don't we just wait till next meeting to vote on the as-built?
You actually have, you actually do have the plan. We could submit the road, the roadway acceptance plan, it's a matter of just basically changing the wording of the title. If it says, it's the same plan, it's gonna show the same information. If I, it's just, it's just a matter of the wording in the title. In the title.
Okay, so, so Tony, nothing, nothing is gonna change on the plan other than the title block for the as-built?
Correct, and, and the addition of an endorsement block for the plan.
Okay. Alright, so do we, do we have a, um, do we have a, uh, motion to, well, we really can't accept the as-built yet because we don't have it, so we can't really, if we accept it, then we have to release the money, right?
No, you don't have the as-built, we can't.
What is the recommendation due to the council, um, Mr. Romulus?
Recommendation is due. Oh, great. Have to check the date. I know it's in November, um, let me see.
So why, so why don't we just, why don't we just vote tonight if, on the non-binding recommendation of the, uh, laying out an acceptance of a public way? And then, once we get the as-built, then we can vote on the as-built and release the five thousand dollars with whatever additional monies they request for the bond.
Well, how about to make it even simpler, if we vote on it tonight with the stipulation that the as-built be delivered to the community economic development office and they then, then carry on the, the procedure. I mean, I have no problem with that. I make myself gobby.
Yeah, alright, well, my only, I mean, I, they'll turn it, I mean, I know they'll turn it in, but I'm just, if we vote on it, but we don't have it, and then, you know what I mean, it's, we don't have, we don't have it, so how do you vote on it?
You're right, you're right.
So, so why don't we just vote on, why don't we just vote out on what's before us? And that's the laying out and acceptance of a public way. And that, the as-built, in all, in all reality, has been reviewed by the town engineer and, and Mr. LeDoux. And then we can vote at the next meeting on any monies they ask for a bond release and the finalized belts.
Fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion to send a favorable or non-favorable recommendation for Oglesway to be accepted as a public way to the town council?
I'll make the favorable recommendation.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any discussion? And just so everybody's clear that, and they saw it, we did receive, this started back in February, believe it or not, and there were, there was a, a site visit. There were a number of items that were corrected and they went back and re, rechecked their, so. Um, so we have a motion and a second. So I'll do, any other discussion? So, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough? Did we lose her again?
Yeah, lost her.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. So Tony, for the next meeting, we'll have a bond, um, request and the finalized belt.
Yep.
Alright, okay, thank you.
I get that from the board.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's go back, go back to the agenda. And I believe this is, um, Mr. Silva's office again. It's, uh, fourteen fifty-three Plymouth Street. Uh, this is BRS Inc., this is a major site plan. The proposal is to replace, uh, the office trailer with an office building with septic and a parking lot map. Twenty-five lots, twenty-four, twenty-five, and eighty-nine. Um, do we have the public hearing notice, Mr. Antonero? If we do have it, could you read it to the record, please? Uh, I just called him, Mr. Antonero, Mr. Romulus, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, uh, just one second.
It wasn't in my mind.
Alright, um.
Elijah, we, I can read it, is it?
I just, I just pulled it up. Um, I only have the word version, so I can't pull it up on the screen.
I figured it's for you, that's fine.
Alright, uh, the planning board, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing on October seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM on application by BRS Inc. for a site plan approval. Under section nine point eight of the town's zoning ordinance to replace the office trailer with an office building with septic and parking lot located at fourteen fifty-three Plymouth Street. Assessors map twenty-five, parcels twenty-fourth, twenty-five, and eighty-nine. Copies of the plans may be requested by emailing CED at Bridgewater MA dot org. Public hearing will be held as a virtual meeting over Zoom. A link and instructions to participate in the meeting will be posted to the calendar on the town's website at Bridgewater MA dot org. A recording of the meeting will also be posted to the town's website within forty-eight hours after the meeting ends. All interested parties are encouraged to attend.
Okay, so, Mr. Romulus, we did receive some, um, feedback from Mr. Antonero. And Mr. Mr. Solari. Uh, Mr. Solari said that, um, he reviewed the, the plans of the new office building. And the site is a pre-existing, non-conforming construction site with buildings already located on the site. I do not have any issues with the construction of a new office building and its location. Um, Mr. Antonero stated that he reviewed the above subject plans dated eight twenty-six twenty twenty by SEA. The site plan is comprised of three sheets. I generally find it satisfactory. However, I do have a couple of review comments. There is no provision made for the proposed roof drain recharge system overflow. No groundwater evaluation data has been documented for the roof drain recharge system. And the proposed onsite sanitary wastewater disposal system should be evaluated as a new construction pursuant to three ten CMR fifteen. Therefore, the board of health approval for the system is required. Let me know if you have any questions or need additional information. And he did that on October first, so, uh, you also did a zoning analysis of the, of the property, and it meets the requirements. So, um, with that, we didn't receive any other, uh, board, uh, public comment, did we, Mr. Romulus?
We did not.
Okay. So with that, why don't we turn, we, did we see the green cards and the advertising information?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we turn it over to the, um, applicant's representatives? Uh, is Mr. Silva or, uh, Mrs. Baptiste on? They both seem to be muted.
Yeah, they're both muted. Uh, Mr. Silva?
Yes, did you unmute Rebecca also?
You're both unmuted, it looks.
Okay. Alright, uh, I'll, I'll start off and then Rebecca can, um, basically take over from there, but basically, you're all, I'm pretty sure that you're all familiar with, uh, the BRS location. Uh, pretty expansive, uh, location on Plymouth Street, just opposite, uh, High Street. And, um, it's a pretty busy place. There's a lot going on there. It's been a great operation under, uh, the Arudas. And, um, they, the problem was, is that they had a trailer which was more like a temporary kind of, uh, office. I believe that the original office, I think, had been lost in a fire at one point. Uh, but they've been working out of this temporary structure for a while. The plans that were provided to you, the architecturals, uh, show you what a, what a The plans that were provided to you, the architecturals, show you what a, what a really nice building he's proposing to put here. I joke with them because it's going to be dusty as hell based on what he does for a living there, but it's really, a really nice asset to the, to the community. So what we, and as far as its siding, its siding is where there is basically existing parking area. And it's right next to where the, the current office is located and where the, the truck scales are and so forth. So what we did was, we, we designed the site around the building so that it provided for a, a new septic system which meets all current requirements under Title V. And it also, we provided for a roof recharge system. And in, along with the comments that the town engineer had expressed, we did in fact do a test pit in the area of the roof drains. Mr. Aruda tried to get the town engineer to be there, but he, he wasn't available. He could not contact him in order to be there when we did the test pit. So I would suggest to you that we could always put a condition that a, another test pit be done at the time of construction, just to verify the results that we've shown on the plans. And as far as an overflow from the roof drains, there's always an overflow from the roof drains by virtue of the fact that the downspouts have an open T just above the surface. So that in the event that the recharge system cannot handle the flow, then the water is allowed to go at the surface onto the pavement itself, or in this case to the, on the pavement adjacent to the building. So as you can see right here, that, I mean, this is a pretty impressive building for BRS, and really will be a nice asset to the community. I, I kind of felt that personally, that he should have been able to go just for a building permit without having to go through a site design and get a site permit because of it, the fact that it was an existing business, had had a building then, he was replacing the building. But, so it wasn't a change in use, and he wasn't creating more parking spaces as a result of it. But we're here where we are, and what we're doing is looking for your approval so that he can get going on construction of this building.
Mr. Silva, can you just explain, this building is going on, if I'm looking at the plan? It's going on existing pavement, correct?
No, it's going on existing gravel surface. A, a good amount, I don't know if you can, Rebecca, can you bring up the? Who has control on the, on the boards, does Rebecca have control over?
Elijah has control, he's going to pull up sheet three for us. It's going to show the building location with the entrances. There it is, right there.
Okay, well, if you can go back to the one before that.
You do, okay.
If you can go back to two. So that's the, the current conditions, and you can see the small office building that's, that's there now, the temporary trailer. And the area around it is the parking area. Which is basically a gravel surface for the most part. Okay, so then if you go to three, you can see that the replacement of that is the, the building. Okay, you can see that the replacement of that small building is this really nice looking building with parking around it. And a little bit more detail as far as, or, when I say detail, meaning that there is a lot more sort of order to what's, what takes place in that area. Right now, it's kind of wide open. Not a lot of organization as far as how things are handled, except that this parking up at the top of the screen that you see there, that, that's still there now. But here, it's going to be a little bit more organized as far as how the, the office functions. And the recharge units, you can see to the, to the left of the building, there are recharge structures there that are on, that are under the, that area of the pavement. And then also to the rear right, you can see that the line leads out to a septic tank, pump chamber, and then the leaching field is up to the top right of your screen. Up in those pocket, in that parking area up there. It's all beautiful soil, it's really nice soil, it's much better in the septic area, the roof charge area was not quite as good, but still good in terms of the quality of the soil there. And the, the roof drain calculations were actually adjusted after we did the, the test pit in order to reflect the types of soils that were there. Nothing else changes from the, how the place functions. It's really, it's really all about just replacing the building. And with that, I, you know, I'll answer whatever questions that you might have.
So, I'll open up to board questions.
Just one question, how, I'm not sure how we're rectifying your position, Larry and Azu wanting on the roof drains, how we can settle that?
I don't think there's anything to settle, right, I mean, you know, we, we go out, we do a test pit for the roof drains, I'm a professional engineer, I go out, I do it, I evaluate soils. We notify him that we're going to be doing it. If he can't be there, we can't be there, if he wants to do another one when we're under construction, then make that a condition that, you know, he can verify the soils at that time. And we would adjust the roof drains, just say, if he didn't agree on something there, we'd adjust the roof drain system at that, at that time. But there's a lot of moving parts that happen here, and sometimes he's not available, like he wasn't available for the meeting before this one, would have been nice to have him there for this one. But we did reach out to him, but he, he wasn't available when we did the the dust, we did it immediately after receiving his comment.
If I may suggest as a condition of approval, we could just add that, you know, test pits be done prior to a building permit.
Another test pit would be done to verify the, the roof drain assumptions.
That's correct.
There's really no big surprises out here. This is, you know, it's a sand and gravel operation, and the soils there are pretty good.
And Mr. and, and the gravel packing that's going to remain. The, the the red lines in the packing shown around the building, is that on gravel or is that on pavement?
Pavement.
So it'll, so it'll be, so, so those, those spots will be striped?
Yes, around the pink areas, yes.
Alright, and then, and then the packing spots, I'm just looking at, the plans are small and everything I'm looking at. Across, those are not striped, but they're earmarked for truck packing?
They're currently truck parking, and that's how he intends to keep them, so I just showed some organization to his not painted, see, it says not painted.
Okay, and then there is, there's, there's sufficient parking based on our zoning, Mr. Romulus, for the, the proposed building, correct?
Yes.
It requires, I was going to say, it requires twenty-five, and we have twenty-five.
And I see to the left of the building, the ADA handicap spaces are provided, correct?
Yes.
And that's the main entrance to the building.
Is there any landscaping, I mean, there's probably no landscaping proposed because it's the dust bowl, right?
You can't really see it, but there is a green squiggly line where he actually does plan to do some landscaping in between the building and the sidewalks. He said if he's going to do it, he's going to do it right, so he will put some landscaping in there. He's not going to spend this much money on a building and have it look dusty.
If I may, I, I did drive by the site last week, and he has maintained all of the, you know, landscaping that abuts on the street pretty well.
That's correct. He buffers the neighborhood very well.
So, so essentially, Mr. Silva and, now, Mr. Baptiste, this is just reconstruction of a smaller building, a temporary building with a permanent building on the same location.
Yes. Okay, nothing changes, the operation is the same operation. There's no changes to the use of the property, it's just basically giving his office staff and, and, and the folks that do the, the trucking and the hauling, a better facility to be able to interface. And I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a really nice building.
Okay, so, I don't know how many people still signed on, but do we have any more? Or do we have board questions before we open it to the public, any board members would like to ask a question?
So is he paving where it says li, limited repaving, so he's going to pave like all the way to the edge where it says not painted, or is that still going to be asphalt buildings?
I believe it's going to stay asphalt millings.
So he's just paving where the parking spaces are, no like roadway around it, is that going to be?
The parking and the, the travel aisle, like a twenty-four foot travel aisle.
Okay, and is, is he paving up to the scales or no?
I'm trying to zoom out, Elijah, could you zoom out so I could see that?
What was the question?
Is he paving up to the scales or not?
Yes, I believe.
The lanes are going to be.
Yes. Yep, that first lane will.
And do we need, do we need a spot for a dumpster anywhere?
He has one off, off screen, I believe, near one of the existing buildings.
There's a major building to the far right.
Yeah.
At it this way, and that's where the dumpster is, and that's, there, you know, there's, there's a lot more operation over there. And that's where the dumpsters are, see, there's a building over on that side. This, this build, this building doesn't need a dumpster per se, they don't, they don't generate that kind of refuse.
Any other board questions?
If I may just say, Jean has had some tech issues, she can hear everything, but can't necessarily make any can't respond.
Okay.
This is one we should talk about, what a wonderful person she is, so she can hear us.
Doesn't matter how nice you are to her, she can't vote, right?
Or can't she type in the chat her response?
Any other board questions, I don't know if there's public on, we'd like to hear public input if there's Mr. McDonald or Mr. Gemian, any questions, Mr. Geller?
Well, it's pretty straightforward.
Would we?
Yes. We'd easy slam dunk.
Mr. Romulus, open it up to the, I'd like to see if we have any hands raised chat questions, I guess?
None that I can see.
Okay, do we, you, Mr. Romulus, you provided us with a list of standard conditions?
Yes, and then just to add the, the test pits in the recharge area, we performed prior to a issuance of a building permit.
Okay. Alright, so. This is just the site plan, right, there's no special permit required?
That's correct.
Alright, so do we have any other board comments or public comments or questions? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
By Mr. Gemian? Do you have a second, here a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Geller. Any further discussion? Okay, do the roll call, Mr. Geller? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Mrs. Guarino, can she respond, or if not, we'll just.
She speaks, thumbs up.
We have.
Indicated yes.
She indicated yes?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Elijah, so Mr. Guarino's a yes, okay. So. Do we have a motion on the project? With the standard conditions, if we decide to move forward with a, with a a motion to approve with the additional condition by Mr. Romulus?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the plan with the, the standard conditions and the, the additional condition suggested by Mr. Romulus with the, the test pit being dug prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. McDonald's. Second by Mr. Gemian. Any discussion? Mr. Gemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Can we hear from Mrs. Guarino?
He just typed in yes.
Alright, and I'm a yes, okay. So, five to zero. Alright. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the, the last item that we have on the agenda. I don't know if it's, we've been going at it for almost three hours, I don't know if we want to table this, so have a little bit of a discussion about the trees and, and a formal policy going forward, like some towns have in regards to site plans and how we should develop that, and I know Mr. Romulus had spent some time in the past about developing a tree policy, and he provided that to us. Do we want to table this, or do we want to have a little bit of a discussion tonight, I, I put this on after our discussion with Mr. Gemian, so. It's, it's up, it's up to you, if you want to discuss it tonight or table.
If I, why don't we do a hybrid sort of? Let me just update the, the tree board, take a one minute, maybe we could table the rest of it for the next meeting. So we have, since we've been here so long. As quickly, remember we, when the solar farm went in on eighteen, we asked them for money to be used for tree planting around town, and they agreed to seventy-six thousand dollars prior to cutting any trees. At that point, there was a discussion with the town manager, assistant town manager, and I forget who else, about setting up a board. It was agreed to, he said he would, and then he didn't. I've been emailing him a while, a lot, and I saw him once, and last week he did email me saying he would set it up. And I recommended that Bill Mountbe, the tree warden, and Shirley Grzinski, who used to be the head of the BIA, be on the board, he thought they were good choices. From that point, nothing else has happened, so that's the update on the tree point.
I'll do some research, and I, I apologize since our last meeting, I haven't. And I, I think I mentioned this to Mr. Romulus and to Mr. Antonero, I think Mr. Antonero has some history with Rainham, and he knows how they do the site plans and whatnot, but we really don't have a tree policy, I, I know just watching Rainham, and I, I'm not sure I completely understand it, so I could be wrong. But just watching one of the site plan approvals, they had a tree requirement for every number of parking spaces created, and, and we have something like that in us, in our central business district, where we require ten percent of the parking areas, so for these new mixed-use buildings, ten percent of the parking areas to have, you know, tree islands, et cetera. But those are the only, the, those are the only projects that we have control over the number of trees being planted, so. I didn't know if we wanted to look at, you know, trying to draft something up and ask a council sponsor for a site plan approval amendment that we, we had a consistent policy so that developers knew ahead of time what our, what our tree planting requirement would be and, and our landscape requirement, and I, I think that that would have been captured if the zoning reclassification and, and rewrite had gone through, but that stalled, and that's going to be done piecemeal now, so. I don't know if it's something that we could try to look at other towns for best practices, how they handle landscape plans and tree planting plans for, for each.
Well, I think, I think we should, I think Elijah's draft is a good beginning. And maybe if we have time, we can discuss it at the next meeting, if we can all do some research. So maybe if we have time, we can discuss it at the next meeting, if we can all do some research. Or a following meeting, I don't know, but I think we, we should at least start moving forward. It may take a couple of meetings to do something, but uh. We should at least start.
All right, so, so why don't, why don't we do this? We, why don't we leave it on as a standing item until we get tired of talking about it? Or until we come to some resolution, we'll have it, just keep it on the agenda, Mr. Romulus, for every meeting?
Uh, yeah, definitely.
And, and then, and then we can decide, you know, if, if we complete the task, we can, we can move, we can remove it. If we get tired of talking, but I think that if we keep it on the agenda for every meeting, it'll, it'll prompt us to think about it and to do some work. To try to come up with a policy for projects going forward in terms of.
With one caveat, that uh if we put it on the agenda, we should, something should be specific, that we just don't. And we, if it's at the end, we may be tired again. Why not, for instance, at the next meeting, we uh at least uh discuss Elijah's recommendation. And use it as a basis to perhaps uh look at other towns and so forth.
All right, and what I, and what I can do between now and next meeting is maybe um Elijah and myself can look at what Rainham actually does. By looking at their zoning and. If I have time, I'll do it. If he has time, he can do it, we can.
I will too, I will too.
See how they handle it, you know, between the three of us, we should be able to pull that together, so. So, that's just one town that I watched, one of their planning board meetings, and they were, they, they talked about it and. Like, I could be wrong, but I think we should just see if they have a policy for us and and see how that works.
I'm more than happy to, you know, meet with the two of you at some point. I, I can't say that I'm an environmentalist, but I do find that, you know, these are issues that we should address. And through a tree board and potential policy, I think those would be great things for Bridgewater.
Well, I agree, so. All right, let's, let's, let's try to find out from the next meeting, just so we have a goal, let's try to, you know. Review what Mr. Romulus has provided so far and pull together the Rainham uh zoning by law for site plans. And see what they have in there, and and then we can look at other towns as well, but, but just for the next meeting, what Mr. Romulus has already done in Rainham. Does that sound good, Ray?
That's good.
All right. Long meeting, but I think we made some headway tonight, so thank you, less than Elijah.
No problem.
Do we have minutes to be approved for nine two twenty and nine sixteen twenty? Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Just a, a question. I looked on the agenda and minutes for various boards. And I noticed that the agendas are up, but the minutes aren't. Maybe I'm looking the wrong place, but.
Are our minutes not getting posted though?
I don't know, I, I don't see them, that's what I'm saying, under the, they have the agendas, but not the minutes.
Well, they should be there.
The minutes?
Yes.
All right, so they're getting posted regularly for minutes? Okay. All right, so, so do we have a motion to approve the nine two twenty minutes and the nine sixteen twenty minutes?
Uh, Jean said that she read the minutes, uh, they all seemed okay.
So, do we have? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, nine two and nine sixteen.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? So, uh, we'll start with Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Grino? Mr. Romulus?
Uh, she said yes.
And I mean, yes, okay, any boards, committees or liaison reports? If none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second? So I'll start with Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Grino?
Uh, bold, yes, with an exclamation point.
I'm sorry, was it Ray and Mike?
Yes.
I think it was Ray and uh Mr. Geller, actually.
Oh, Geller, okay, thank you.
Whatever. Okay, all right, night, folks.
All right, I'm, I'm tired. I, I, I called Mr. Silva, Mr. Costco once, I called Elijah, Azu, I gotta go to bed.
Good night.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll see you later.
Have a good one.
Elijah?
Yes.
Um, I'm not.